Okay, thank you.
All right.
All set, Jennifer?
Okay, sure. So this meeting is being convened in accordance with recent amendments to the open meetings law, which allows board members to convene via video conference without publicly noticing their individual locations. The meeting can be accessed via the Zoom platform and also via the town's YouTube platform. Members of the public for public hearings can raise their digital hand and participate or call in to the Zoom platform to participate in the public hearings. Transcript will be provided of the planning board meeting. There is a quorum of the planning board members present, so the meeting is legally convened. And I will turn it over to you, Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So we'll call the meeting to order, and our first matter is a public hearing. This is for the Fox Hollow Sewer Company Riverwoods Community Association on Croton Avenue in Mount Kisco. This is for the sewer system improvements. This is an application for a site development plan approval, wetlands permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan. We last heard this as an informal hearing on November 3, 2021. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a lot of technical issues here, but I think perhaps maybe if the applicant's engineer could just bring us up to speed for the benefit of the public, I think would be a quick summary of the project and some of the parameters, and we can take it from there.
Sure. Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering, the engineers for the project. Let me just share my screen quick. All right, can everybody see this? Just wanted to make sure. So basically, again, since this is a public hearing, I'll just give a quick recap, like you already stated. So basically, currently, the sewage from the Riverwood Development, which is this sizable chunk of property, as well as the portion of the Yeshiva property, all flows via gravity and some via a forced main to the existing wastewater treatment plant located on the Yeshiva property. Since the existing treatment plant has reached the end of its life, it's no longer in full compliance with the DEP's regulations. The DEP is actually proposing to fully fund the construction of the proposed sewer improvements to remove this treatment plant from service and redirect the flows to the Mount Kisco, the Village of Mount Kisco Sewer System, which subsequently goes to the West Coast Environmental Facility System. So the proposed improvements include three pump stations. And I'll zoom in a little bit if I can. It consists of three pump stations. The first is, we call the Yeshiva Pump Station, obviously aptly named on the Yeshiva property, located adjacent to the existing treatment plant. The second pump station is the Riverwood Pump Station, which is located in the approximate location of the existing pump station that's there now. And then the third pump station is what we call the combined pump station, where the flows from both of these pump up to this combined flow pump station, and then subsequently pump up to the Village of Mount Kisco system. Just to give an overview again, the existing flows from the Yeshiva, it's pumped up via, I believe it's a four-inch main up till it meets approximate location of the Riverwood Pump Station. The Riverwood Pump Station pumps out a three-inch forced main. Then both pipes are in the same trench up Old Town Crossing to the vicinity of the combined pump station, where they discharge via gravity to the pump station. And then from the pump station, they're pumped up via six-inch forced main up Croton Avenue to Turner Lane, then up Turner Lane to, again, where we were saying there's the existing connection to Mount Kisco Sewer System. That connection will be a gravity connection and obviously will be coordinated with the village's consulting engineer. So in order to construct this, approximately 7,804 square feet of disturbance is proposed within the existing wetlands buffers. Again, there's no disturbance within the wetlands proper, just within the buffers with five, hold on, let's see, one more numbers, 5,541 square feet within the existing roadway. That includes the portion that crosses, the 1,057 square foot portion that crosses the buffer along the service road in this location. And then the 4,0484 square foot buffer crossing that crosses, that's within Old Town Crossing, that crosses this portion of the buffer, as well as a portion of the existing maintenance drive that goes out to access the existing pump station. Only approximately 2,263 square feet of disturbance is within the buffer outside of the roadways. That's for the construction of the decommissioning of the existing pump station and associated piping, and then the installation of the new gravity manholes and new pump station for the Riverwood Pump Station. And then, as mentioned in our previous meeting, we think this disturbance is minimal, especially given the environmental benefits that the overall project gives by taking the existing wastewater treatment plant out of commission. And that no longer will discharge into the Kinsico River, which obviously won't affect the DEP's new Croton reservoir. In the latest set of plans that were submitted, we did provide a wetlands map. Our wetlands consultant was able to go out and actually map the area that was requested around the back of the wastewater treatment plant. This was then subsequently added to our plans. And as you could see, the location of the wetlands and then the 100-foot wetland buffer. Based on this, obviously, we're not disturbing any additional buffer. There's not any additional buffer disturbance, as these wetlands are far enough away. The second major revision that we had was along Croton Avenue. The concern was, obviously, we're, in the original design that was submitted, we're going right down the center of Croton Avenue, which obviously would have been a nightmare to construct with diverting the traffic. So what we've done now is, once it exits the, actually, once it exits the entrance into Riverwoods, it'll cross the street to the northbound lane from Croton Avenue going north away from the Sawmill. This will follow along the center of that lane from about Station 700 to Station 2074, which is about right here in this location. From here, it'll transition to the southbound lane, and it'll run down the center of the southbound lane until you get to, and there's match lines over here. It'll run down the southbound, center of the southbound lane, until it gets to Turner. Then it'll hang a left onto Turner, and then stay on the right side of Turner until it makes the connection up on, sorry, up on at the gravity manhole connection to the Mount Kisco Sewer System. To make sure that this all works and can be constructed, we've also provided maintenance and protection of traffic plans, which I'll bring up now. These, obviously, it's pretty detailed, but these, obviously, they make sure that all the work is being completed on one side, and it's obviously, and it gives enough space for traffic to pass by. When the traffic exits the, or when the force main exits the site, the minimal trenching that's needed in that area, obviously, it'll be a flagman on each side, or snipers on each side, that'll direct the traffic around that portion of the main installation. Then, once it meets the other side, the work begins on the northbound side, following this entire length, which will be closed for its full length. Obviously, any driveway crossings that would be required to maintain access to the existing residential driveways in this location, this location, and this, a couple more down the road. But this provides about 10 feet of drive aisle, which would be coordinated so that cars can make it through and down and around the construction. To be honest, this shows the entire length, which is from Station 700 to Station 2074. That's a considerable length. We don't intend, we don't anticipate for this entire length to be closed at once. Obviously, as they build it, we anticipate they're going to backfill to grade so that when, that they can continue opening that side of the roadway as they move down and shift the entire, shift the maintenance and protection control measures with it until you get to this point. Once you get to this point, it shifts across the street, and then, obviously, all the maintenance control measures flip to the opposite side and provide the same measure of protection to redirect the traffic on the northbound side of the Croton Avenue. And then, once you cross the Mount Kisco, obviously, the same applies up Turner, where it stays in the right lane of Turner for that last bit, and then everybody has access on their side.
Dan, at one point, you mentioned that in your memo, I believe, that there is a chance that the Con Edison line might be located in an area that might actually cause you to have to close a section of the road at a time. Obviously, a flag people there. Where would that be? Where might that be if it does happen?
The Con Ed line, based on what was marked out in the field, runs essentially along the curb line along the northern side. So basically, what happens is, the gas lines on this side runs along the curb. You can see, if I zoom in a little bit more, you can see the gas where it's labeled "gas, gas, gas." And then the water line actually runs along the opposite curb line. Per the Health Department, we're required to stay 10 feet away from the water main. So we're well on this side of the road, so we're going to be following within two to five feet of that gas main along that entire length until you get to the part where it crosses. And the reason that we cross to the southbound side is because everything flips around. So the gas main continues to follow along the curb line, along the eastern side of the road, along the northbound curb line. And then, what happens is, the water main comes up and switches, and they switch sides. So the water main comes up and goes on the eastern side, and the gas main comes across and goes along the western side. So then, we switch in this location to go from the northbound lane to the southbound, and then still follow in parallel with that gas main that's there, which, again, will stay between two to three feet away from, for the entire length up until this location. And then, once we head up Turner, the gas and water, the water actually ends here. The gas continues on the left side of the road, so we're far enough away at that point.
How do you maintain the 10-foot section when you have that cross area? Is that with depth of soil, difference in 10 feet, or is it lateral somehow?
That'll be, it'll be vertical distance. We need to provide 18 inches of vertical separation and 10 feet of horizontal required by the Health Department. So where a cross is here, we're going to be providing 18 inches of horizontal separation.
Okay.
That was, those are the major changes. With that, we did receive some minor technical comments from Bob Seeley that just can be included in the resolution. They're nothing that's going to change the overall layout. And as a result of tonight, we're looking for any comments from the public, if they have any. Any additional comments from the board to include in the design, and hopefully move, close the public hearing and move to approval.
Right, and I think in this rendition, you've made a couple of changes so that there are no trees that are going to be removed.
We went out in the field, yes, yeah, we went out in the field and we took a look at everything, and it, it looks like we're going to be able to avoid any removing any existing trees. Obviously, if something's abandoned that's in the field and it's determined at that time that it's not, that we have to do it, then obviously, we'll have to do it, and then we'll deal with it then. But right now, right now, it appears as though we're not going to have to take anything down.
Okay. All righty. Bob, I know you have a number of comments. We want to run through those quickly, and then we can open up to board members and the public for comments and questions.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'll give you the shortened version. ST1, stormwater comments, there is no post-stormwater construction required here. Everything's just basically for erosion control. This is more than 5,000, but less than one acre of disturbance, that's ST1. My MPT comments, MPT1 through MPT5 are technical revisions to the plans that should be made regarding steel plates, working hours. M6 is basically notification prior to construction. I just want to make it clear on M7, the final pavement restoration, based on a street opening permit, based on Chapter 111. As per the commissioner, you're going to require that whole width pavement from shoulder and both travel lanes and the other shoulder to be milled and filled with two inches. So make certain you show that on their updated plans and incorporate that into your estimate. GC1, basically, is a street opening permit. I put the amount in there, it's 59.2. That 59.2 is really mainly a bond for DPW, with the fee that the town keeps is only $200. GC4, I just had some technical comments in there with the trench detail. Thank you, by the way, for putting all cakecrete in there, that's going to make it last a lot longer. You don't have to worry about all the compaction and controlled fill. Another big one, GC10, I'm going to skip to, because, keep in mind, guys, because this is a private infrastructure improvement in a town right of way, there will need to be submitted an easement agreement to town council to be looked at and reviewed and filed in the county as well and approved by the town board, that's GC10. And another one I'll skip to, another big one, GC13. We met with Joe Spy a few weeks back at Con Ed Officials, Commissioner of Public Works. And just to be safe, I know the chairman mentioned this briefly before, just to be safe, keep in mind, this markout for the gas line is based on MSCO. The error, percent error on those things are plus or minus two feet. If it is found to be that that Con Ed trench or Con Ed pipe is closer to the pipe that I showed on the plans, that road may have to be closed, so I would highly recommend they do a road closure detour plan as a contingency. So when we find out we have to close the road, we're not scratching our heads and don't have a plan for it. So that's G13A, and also too, G13B, I highly recommend that you have a plan when you have to do the full width milling and filling of that whole road as well, which is going to be quite a bit of work. And keep in mind, you'll have to submit a performance bond and inspection fee and an itemized engineers cost estimate. Make sure you include all the full width pavement and striping that will be involved along as well. As the chairman said, these are more technical comments, it's not going to change the intent of what you're trying to do there. So I have no objection, and they've already been put into the resolution as actions of approval, which we all looked at, so that ends my comments right now, Chairman.
Okay, very good. Dan, perhaps you could fill in a little bit. Can you give us some details? I'm sure the residents will be interested in this, in terms of what the actual timeframe is. I know we have a sequence in how you're going to do it, but what do you think is going to be the realistic time? Obviously, this has got, this project has got wonderful benefits, but obviously, temporarily, there are going to be some inconveniences. What does it look like in terms of the timing and the disruption on the Croton Avenue and the, you know, adjacent roadways?
We anticipate that most of this work, obviously, is going to be done in tandem, so that everything can get done at the same time, so that we're not slowing anything down. So it's not going to be, you know, Yeshiva up to here, you know, Yeshiva up to the, the work onsite will probably be completed at once. At the same time, the work involved with the combined station can be done all the way up to there, to that point, then, once everything's connected. I'd have to, I'd have to look back into my notes that I don't have here, obviously, I'm at home, so I have it at my desk at work, to see what our exact timeframe. I believe it was, we were going to try to start in the spring of this year and work through the summer into the winter. I don't know the approximate timeframe or how long exactly it's going to take, so I'd have to get back to you on the absolute number for that.
Okay.
Yes, there will be, there will be some disturbance, but then again, it's a more of a, at the end of it all, it's a benefit for Riverwoods, it's a benefit to Yeshiva. It's obviously a benefit for the environment and for the surrounding population as it's taking, we're taking this out of the Kisco River and getting it put towards a more efficient measures of treating it through the county system. So it will, the benefits obviously offset the negative impacts that'll happen in the next year, probably.
Right. Bob, I had a question for you, actually, and that goes back to the hours of work. Are those hours of work, are those determined by the town, is that town code nine to four? Or, you know, or is it something that, I don't know where it's coming from?
Well, in our previous experience, Robert, I always check with Seth Corwin. In discussion with Jill and the administration, that's always a good policy that we have, and I make certain that he is the head of the traffic quad bus transportation, and I always make certain that the construction doesn't impede any of his transportation avenues that he has to do, and he was comfortable with that. So that's where I come up with those numbers.
Well, I guess the question I would ask, and we've done this in other applications, is perhaps in the summertime, when we don't have the same sort of school traffic, I wonder, and of course, more sunlight, I wonder whether or not we might have flexibility to help the applicant to move the, you know, the process along further and faster to everyone's benefit. And perhaps, I don't know what the hours and what the dates might be, but there might be times where we could actually, subject to the town's noise ordinances, perhaps start earlier and end a little bit later, especially in the summertime. Just a thought, I didn't know where the nine to four came from. If it's code and we can't bend it, I certainly understand, but
No, they could. They've done that in the past. They can put that note in there, and that's a good point, Robert. Where if they approach the board, they can get waivers for noise ordinances, and the town board has done that in the past. And also, too, if it's okay with Seth Corwin, who's the director of transportation, bus company, they can do that as well, so they can get more work done during the summer hours. And those are good notes to add to the MPT plan. Good point, Robert.
Bob, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Dick.
The, given that you have all these different subterranean conduits, whether it be electricity, gas, you know, metal sewer pipes, during the construction, will the applicant be going ahead of the actual digging with some sort of, oh, I don't know, metal detector or whatever is this more sophisticated version of that, just to make sure that they know where the various conduits are?
Absolutely, yeah, that's, it's outlined in our construction notes, in our general notes, that the contract, once the contract gets brought on board, it's their responsibility to go out and either field market with more high-tech utility markout company or to dig test pits around certain utilities to figure out exactly where they are. So that is something, obviously, that, yeah, that gets coordinated as the construction progresses.
Good. Okay, any other questions from staff or board members? You know, Dennis had some comments last time, I think they've satisfied his comments with this latest
On the phone, Bob, Dennis is on the phone.
Okay, Dennis, are you there? Are there any issues or questions, Dennis?
No, I would say to the to the situation with respect to trees, and I think we tried to address that in the resolution, that, you know, if it came to the point where, obviously, a field change or if trees had to come down to just contact me first, just so that I could at least, you know, lay eyes on it and, you know, just be involved in the process. And they completed the delineation, so they, you know, definitely represented the single and complete project, so I'm pretty good from here.
Very good, excellent, thank you. Sabrina, any questions, thoughts that you wanted to add?
No, Bob, I think that, you know, I, for one, I've said this before, and thrown this project move forward, so you know, I think from a planning perspective, it makes a heck of a lot of sense to divert this wastewater treatment plant where it's going. The plans seem to be in order from, you know, from the Riverwoods perspective, making sure everything is conforming, and it's really a utility project.
Yep, terrific. Any other questions from board members before we turn it over to the public? Any public questions? And by the way, if members of the public have a question, please raise your digital hand, and we'll recognize you and take your comment or question. Pam, do we have any, anyone out there wanting to make any comments?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised this time, no.
Okay. All right, therefore, is there a motion now to close the public hearing?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motions carried. We'd have next, we had a resolution, I was drawn up in preparation for this, this application. So that's our next item on the agenda, is the resolution itself for the project and the application. Any questions on the resolution that's before us, from either the applicant or anyone else who has seen it? Hopefully, board members have seen it, sorry.
I'll just mention two things that came up during the discussion during the public hearing. One is on page four of the resolution, the second whereas clause. We have recited the amount of square feet of wetland buffer disturbance located within the existing roadway, and that was cited as 5,500, and I think I heard the applicant say the number is actually 5,541. So I would suggest we just modify that to be more accurate. And then, my second comment is on page five, under condition six, regarding the hours of operation for construction. The note to be added to the plans is that the hours of work shall occur during regular daytime hours between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And based on the discussion, we can add, unless otherwise permitted by the Development Department or Town Board as appropriate.
Good, I think that makes good sense, that's good language. Great. I had a comment at the very bottom of page four, where we're talking about protecting erosion, and because this is going to be a long-term project, not only just the use, but the proper maintenance of these protective devices. So very often, in these longer projects, some of the fences and everything just start to collapse, and they're not as effective. So making sure that we maintain those during the course of the project. And I was going to ask Dan for a whole bunch of different dates for the resolution, but he has squirmed out of all of those, so we don't have firm dates, so it's fine. And I think that's quite reasonable, frankly, given the project, scope of the project. Any other questions or comments on the resolution? If not, will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended? I think you're muted, Dick. I think everyone's muted. We have this, maybe in silence here for a while.
I'll move it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motions carried for zero, and we're all set, so very good. Good luck on the project.
All right.
And
Thank you so much.
Yeah, great success, thank you so much.
Thank you, we got it. Have a good night. Yes, Happy New Year, happy holidays.
Okay, we move now to our next item, and this is a discussion item. We were at the site at 106 Tripp Street on Saturday morning. So this is regarding 106 Tripp Street LLC, at 106 Tripp Street. We were there, this is an application for a preliminary subdivision plot approval, site development plan approval, an application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control, wetland permit and tree removal permit. So we last heard this on December 7, night out there last week. So we basically made observations. We walked the property, we were there with the applicant and the applicant's representatives. So we had some, I'm sure we have some thoughts on this, and I know that we have interest from neighbors as well. So I don't want, you know, suck all the oxygen out of here tonight, so does anyone have any thoughts that they would like to start with in terms of the meeting? I think the overall concept was, the overall takeaway was that we were convinced that there was a number of options available, reasonable options available to the applicant, and they were going to take a look at it once we had this discussion, and perhaps were able to give the applicant a little bit more direction.
I'll also say that I very much enjoyed the site visit. I think it was incredibly informative and helpful, and always a good idea to go and see the site, because, especially now, just sitting behind a computer, it's just so much more helpful to see the things that we're talking about. So that was very helpful and really appreciated.
Great.
Bob?
Yes, Tom?
Because there will be some time and money invested by the applicant in preparing for our next meeting and next look-see at the materials. preparing for our, our next, uh, meeting and next look see at the, uh, at the, at the materials that they bring. Uh, could we be, uh, a little bit, uh, just give a, be sure that we have clarification on uh, what we, uh, in addition to, uh, the alternatives that were presented uh, heretofore, uh, what, uh, what further uh, alternatives that, uh, we talked about on the site that we, we like to see. I mean, there were like, uh, occasionally there were five or six conversations going on at the same time. And I think it'd be good to just summarize that if you would.
Okay, uh, perhaps Rick can help us on this as well, but I, I think, um, I think the, the takeaway was to ask the applicant to look at some of these other alternatives that we observed, uh, during the course of the walk. Some of those were, um, further to the east on the parcel that, uh, the proposed activity was proposed. There was some discussion about moving, uh, one option I think was moving, um, uh, the location of the building on that that paddock area, if you will, maybe thirty, forty, fifty feet. I don't forget which, to the, 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 uh, east. There were some discussion about perhaps, uh, uh, lowering, uh, the, the building, uh, that's more of a engineering and architectural treatment. Uh, so that the, uh, we would have less of an impact on the view sheds. There was some talk about, uh, going to six feet and changing some of the, the slopes. There was some talk about reorienting the buildings and perhaps that would lessen some of the impacts to the neighbors on, um, Rosen, Roseville, Roseville. Um, there was discussion, we looked at other paddocks out there in the area, uh, in the same operating area. And we inquired about those as to, uh, whether or not we could, uh, see those. The, uh, one issue I mentioned to the engineer, to Rick, was just to let us know if there were, not that I really expect it, but if there were any kind of environmental, uh, stops that would prevent, uh, a relocation, you know, uh, to one of the other paddocks and to further to the east. Uh, obviously that would be, uh, an issue. So, and I think we also talked about moving the location further, um, to the north, uh, and closer to the existing barn. So that was on one side. And then of course, we even looked, uh, we went to the northern side of the property to the flat, uh, uh, plane, uh, that was a little bit further from the barn and looked at that location as well. I don't know if Rick has been able to do it. I asked Rick if he could give us a a sightline from Rosen home up until, up, uh, uh, up to that area with a presumed location of a building, just to give us an idea what that might look like. So I think, um, I, I, you know, there were, obviously the, the applicant had concerns with regard to the operations, their horse operations. There was some issue about, uh, steep slopes in terms of, not steep slopes per se, but the, the steepness of any kind of, uh, areas where the horses would have to walk and inclement weather. Um, and one thing we did not talk about, uh, which we should have and mentioned, I think it's an easy thing. But architecturally, we would need to know what, what kind of treatment we would see on the, the structure itself. Presume, and what color? Uh, obviously a stark white, uh, uh, structure is going to have, uh, far more impact, um, than something else. So.
Something natural like greenish, which I think is, uh, being carefully thought about by the applicant. That might help. The other, the other thing is that there's a lot of groundwater that is in the area. And, um, that kind of, uh, makes it very critical to, to see that when we capture or the applicant captures the rainwater off the roof, that it really will be okay to put it into the ground. You know, a lot of those low levels. To me, um, I know that, uh, we, we noted, we noted this, that that the up, there's a backyard that is up above all of that. And to me, it looks like it, that might be another place to take a look at to see if the groundwater is going to be able to handle the, uh, the groundwater conditions, can handle the extra water that would be put into the system. Now, the subterranean system. So that's another, another thing that, that might help. Uh, particularly, it might also help with the view shed. Um, I understand that, you know, it's a backyard, so it has, uh, some ramifications there relative to children playing. But hey, we have to balance what we can and, um, and go from there.
Uh, I, Dick, I, I agree with those comments about, uh, we can call it the, the upper site if just for convenience, uh, the one which is uh, more aligned with the house and has been represented as the backyard, uh, of the house, uh, property. I think that ought to get a hard look with respect to, uh, to the drainage condition up there and whether it's, uh, more difficult to less difficult compared to the, uh, the paddock locations. Um, I think it would be helpful for the applicant because we are in the business of weighing these things. I think it'd be helpful if the applicant could, um, make a list of, uh, if they would, what they see as the benefits, disbenefits, uh, to them with respect to, uh, to, uh, these various locations. Uh, you know, maybe perhaps some sort of a quick matrix would be helpful. Um, the technical, uh, matters involved, uh, the operational matters, uh, involved with respect to, I think operational is a pretty, a pretty heavy term for moving a horse from a barn to a pasture, but we can use that term for now. Uh, operational measures and, um, aesthetic considerations that the applicant might have. With respect to these various, uh, locations, that would be very helpful to the board. And I think it would, it would help us advance the application without having to come back again and again. I'm a fan of trying to get everything on the table as soon as possible so that a decision can be made expeditiously.
I, I think a, um, a matrix is a great idea. Um, it'll show, um, at least from the applicant's point of view, some of the pros and cons of, uh, some of the alternative sites. Um, I think thinking through some of the alternative sites is a good idea. Um, however, um, I want to be careful of not, um, unnecessarily sending the applicant on sort of a wild goose chase. Um, you know, I'm, we talked about this a little bit, uh, Tom, you and I on the site, um, but, uh, you know, on, on, on some level, don't want to get too much, uh, you know, uh, into the business of something that's not, may not necessarily be our business. Um, I understand that this application is before us and, um, and, you know, in the interest of good site planning, we need to think about where to put these, uh, such a structure. But, um, the proposal is, I, I get, I want confirmation, Sabrina, but the proposal is zoning compliant. The location of the site, um, and, and but for the realignment of the um, lot lines, this would not come before us. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
And in fact, would not require any sort of additional approval for the location of this structure. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to be mindful of that.
I just, I just want to clarify it. I, because I do believe that, um, if it's, Sabrina, is it a recreational facility, an indoor recreational facility under the code that's subject to site plan?
That's why it had to come to the planning board because it was a recreational facility indoor. And that's why Tommy had that determination.
Yes.
But, but, but for the recreational aspect of it, it could be done as of right.
Correct.
Right. If this were, say, a garage, then it could be done as of right. But recre, indoor recreational facilities, if it's like a swimming pool or a tennis court or a horseback riding ring that's indoors, um, according to the, the town code is subject to site plan approval.
That's correct. Which is what is prompting the, the lot line change, right?
The lot line change is prompted by the fact that you can't have an accessory structure on a lot that doesn't have a principal structure or principal use.
Okay, so, so, so that's, that's very helpful.
Location.
Sorry, say it again, Sabrina?
I said it's the location of the, there's two things. It's the indoor recreation, the use is being classified, requiring site plan. But it's also the location on an existing lot without a principal use.
Okay, so, so that's very helpful. And so, um, the use itself is triggering the site plan because of it's the indoor recreation. So, you know, it, it, I, I, I think that we should consider sort of why the applicant, and this isn't, you know, I, you guys have heard me say this before, but I think we need to consider why an application is before us. Um, um, and I don't want to, from my perspective, I, you know, I, I don't want to go too far beyond that. Now, there is a sort of elastic clause and good site planning. And if something comes before us, we have a right to ask a lot of questions and that's important. But I don't want to drive applicants crazy. Um, and, um, I, I, I think, uh, an understanding of the alternatives, uh, if they are, are better alternatives, then we should know about them. But, um, not just for the sake of asking about alternatives and driving applicants crazy. That's, that's kind of where, um, what I'm thinking.
So let me, let me see if I can respond to that. Um, uh, this really is, um, at, at, at the very first steps, this really is binary. I mean, it's either before us or isn't before us. It's before us because of our town code or it isn't before us because our town code says that it isn't before us. Once it is before us, I think that you'll, I, I think that we have the responsibility to look at it as, as we would any other application that's before us. And not consider why it's before us as a mitigating factor. I actually think that you could get, but maybe Jennifer wants to weigh in on this and maybe not, but in my, uh, uh, opinion, um, I think you could get in trouble by that. Um, so I'd be very careful about, about suggesting that, well, you know, this is really not that important. It is important because it's before us. And I think we need to treat, treat it equally, as equally as we do uh, any other consult, any other application. Now, with respect to whether we drive people crazy or not, I'm, I'm really trying to be, try to be very sensitive about that. And I think it, it behooves us, and this is really probably part of a discussion that we will be having, I think, next on planning board process. But the ways in which we, we, um, we go through our discussions and then give, uh, direction or suggestions to applicants. I think that, that we need to be very mindful of, as you said, driving people crazy. Uh, I'm not sure that, um, that we are necessarily always guilty of driving people crazy. People may feel they're going crazy because they don't like the process. You know, I get that. They don't want to be before us. I understand that. But, uh, that, that, that doesn't, uh, change our responsibility to be thorough and, and to be, uh, as deliberate as we, as we need to be to get to the right answer.
Well, I think it, uh, uh, just to chime in here, obviously, uh, between the two of you, you've hit the main points and that is this is a balancing act. Um, and, uh, as far as I could tell in talking with the applicant out in the field, uh, they certainly were sensitive to that and were very cooperative and receptive to at least listening to different ideas and concepts. Um, I think it's, um, uh, along with Eldad's comment, I think it's important to understand that I know we, we hear this very often and I think we've heard it from some of, uh, some of the neighbors. Um, you know, view sheds are, one person's view shed is another person's yard. And, uh, if you want to retain that view shed, there's always the option of purchasing it. But when it's someone else's property, that, that necessarily is not necessarily a, uh, a right. But at the same token, uh, another concept that we constantly work with here is that the impact of an application should be borne by the applicant to the greatest extent possible and not, um, outsourced, if you will, to, to a neighbor. So that I think that's the balancing act that we have here, uh, in terms of, as Dick, uh, uh, indicated, uh, water, uh, stormwater, uh, flow, um, uh, from this new structure as well as views and, and locations and, um, you know, some of the other things that we talked about, uh, we'll hear about, I think, from, uh, neighbors, the terms of their concerns. So I, I was very happy in, 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 in talking with the applicant and my, my impression was that they were receptive to look into their files. First of all, I think Rick has got extensive, uh, files, uh, from previous applications in terms of, um, fortunately, that will help us with regard to any kind of environmental issues. And, uh, should also help us in terms of what the, the soils are like. And yes, uh, give us a head start, uh, on, on some of these, uh, issues that otherwise would be expensive and constrained. So that was really helpful. And I, and I thought that it was very constructive out there where people said, okay, we'll take a look at it and see what that means, uh, with the understanding that, um, you know, the applicant obviously has some, um, some preferences in terms of, uh, what they do on their own property. So, I know Canaan was there, but I don't see her here right now, but I know she was there and we exchanged some thoughts when we were walking up the hill. Um, and, uh, I, I would say that she was also sensitive to the same sort of balancing, um, that, uh, the applicant, I think, uh, indicated as well. So I don't, uh, uh, perhaps Rick, I, I keep looking to you, but you, you're kind of the engineer of this. Is there something that we can, uh, more definitively, uh, advise you to look at? Or have you heard enough from us, uh, not to, you know, belabor this, this, this conversation even now? Uh, we certainly understand where the applicant comes from in terms of, uh, so-called operation and, and location of, you know, proximate to the barn. But were there other issues? Um, maybe you've encountered some other, uh, issues since we've, uh, we met?
Um, I've had a chance to just, for the record, Rick Bolander, JMC, um, I've had a chance to look at, you know, what we talked about in the field, just past records and past soils testing, um, just briefly. Nothing too far written. And I've, I've looked at, you know, multiple view sheds. Um, and it, and you guys, you know, we, we discussed after our meeting, um, kind of a plan of attack. And it was, it was very clear. And, you know, tonight to solidify it, I think I, I, speaking for the team, have a, you know, a great idea of what we need to do going forward. Um, and like you said, the matrix, I think is a perfect idea. We could put that together. And, and I had a question about that, just for clarity, would you prefer to include that on drawings or do you want that as a separate document? Or is it not really?
I don't think we have any special guideline, but I, I think it's a separate document, a separate little spreadsheet would be helpful.
Okay.
But it's all put together. Yep.
Yeah, you can feel comfortable that most of us can read and write and understand drawings.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, uh, let me just chime in a little bit, Whitney Singleton for the applicant. Um, I just, I just wanted to note that um, the chairman's assessment of the site visit and what went on out there and what feedback you're looking for us was very concise, yet very thorough. Um, I, I concur with everything that he said as far as the observations that were taken in and, um, and the feed, the feedback, the direction that you, your board wanted us to explore. So we look forward to giving you that information. Okay. Um, any other questions? Hi, Canaan.
Hi.
Uh, did you have any questions or observations that you wanted to share with regard to the one oh six Tripp, uh, street, uh, uh, field visit?
Uh, yes, my apologies. I was on a different call that I couldn't get off earlier. Um, I think, I think I agree that, uh, it should not be in the current decided location. We should, we should look for other alternatives because there are ways to solve, solve that problem. Um, I also thought that the drawings really needed contours for us to be able to s- see and help. And I'm sure, um, their team and the architect team can figure out where they can find a location which would take advantage of the contours. I mean, I understand it's going to be a little higher in terms of view, but, uh, view shed for the neighbors, but I also think that, uh, giving the distance between the t- between their fence. And I know the required is really only a hundred feet, but I think we can do better. It's my opinion.
Okay. Um, um, Sabrina and, and Jennifer, just your thoughts on this. Seems that maybe we have a couple of, uh, comments coming in on chat and, uh, somehow when I click onto it and I lose it after I, I don't know how, but anyway, it's me. Um, would it be, um, and again, anticipating, uh, what we're going to talk about next. Would it be helpful at this point to, to move this to a public hearing? I, 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 my sense is that we, we tend to frustrate neighbors because we're, we're having these informal conversations. And we don't get, uh, the benefit of the input earlier on, uh, we have it, of course, in writing. But it seems to me that, uh, perhaps at this point, we could, uh, uh, move this over to public. Uh, have the applicant bring in the various, uh, drawings and sketches and matrix and whatever else they want to, uh, present to us. Uh, that's consistent with what we've been talking about and asking. Uh, again, it gives everyone the sense that we're moving forward, even if we're not. But it also enables, uh, uh, you know, members of the public to really, uh, participate in a more meaningful way than chats. Because I understand that the chats disappear. They're not really on, in the record. So.
Yeah, you're correct, Bob. Listen, I, I think if the board wants to move it to public hearing to give the public an opportunity to weigh in, you know, the only thing I'd say is that I think it's important that the board. You know, the only thing I'd say is that I think it's important that the board gets, gets, has time to review the alternatives. You know, the alternatives on the merits of your own review and then listen to the public. So I'm not sure if you want to have one more informal pending submission of the alternatives and then open it up to a public hearing. You know, because i- it's important that the board has its own time to review the materials. And I'm not sure that, you know, depending, I don't know what the alternatives are going to look like. You know, and, and whether or not they'll be meaningful. But I would want the board to have time to review that before, you know, being influenced by public comment.
Yeah, I think Sabrina brings up a good point. Because while, you know, I think the public should be heard early in, in the process. I think it's also probably frustrating to the public if the board is going to spend, you know, a good deal of time reviewing the alternatives with the applicant attends a public hearing expecting to speak at, you know, seven or seven thirty. But, but they don't have the opportunity until much later in the evening after the board has done its job. So I, I think it's two edges of, of the sword, so to speak. So I, I agree with Sabrina that perhaps one more informal might make sense with the idea that at your next meeting for 106 Tripp Street, that you'd be looking to schedule the public hearing for, for the one after that.
Okay. Is that okay with board members? I'm certainly fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay. I know it's a little frustrating to some of the neighbors, but we will get to you, of course, and, and I'm, I think. Does everyone have the benefit of reading the chats as well as they, as they come up? Okay.
Everyone is reading them. They're not official, they're not officially entered into the record. But, you know, everybody receives the emails and, you know, we can see the comments that are coming in.
And the emails will be part of the record, right?
Yes, they are part of the record. Everything is, everything that the town receives is forwarded to you as a board. But, you know, right now, we haven't seen alternatives from the applicant. And I don't want to shortchange the, the benefit of the board of receiving the alternatives. You know, I'm hopeful that we receive alternatives that, you know, offer discussion and pros and cons for the board to weigh in balance in relation to the issues that have been raised thus far. But, you know, we haven't seen anything, so we can't weigh in on it.
Good. I think that makes sense.
And just on, on the topic of, of alternatives. I want to say again, Tom, I think your matrix idea is a great idea. And to that end, you know, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out a little bit of what, you know, what problem we're trying to solve by, by proposing a lot of alternatives. But i- i- if one of the problems is blocking the neighbor's view, then, Rick, I don't know if this is. I know we talked about it onsite. I don't know if it was going to be part of your plan. But you had talked about lowering, sort of sinking the building a little bit, a proposed building. And, and also you had talked about, a lot about planting along the, the property line. So if you could talk, have that be as, you know, perhaps one of the alternatives as well. I think that would be helpful.
I, I would just like to add to that by saying that we should also turn it around, just think about why does the, you know, why, why are the, why is the applicant looking for that spot specifically? I think what I heard was it's the easiest path to the barn. And again, it was, it was a conversation about how easy it is for the horses to get up that. I understood that going up the road is harder. But I think it is also important to sort of see that there are multiple other locations literally within that which can accommodate for how the horses move on the property itself. So to me personally, that didn't feel like a compelling enough reason not to explore other options.
Other options are, are going to be explored, thankfully, with the cooperation of the applicant. And I, I would expect and hope that the, the points that both Eldad and Canaan and, and Dick and Bob have, have brought up would be somehow represented as quantitative and qualitative items in this, in this matrix. So that we can, and get as much of that on one page as is reasonable and possible to direct, to direct us through the next meeting in trying to come to a, a consensus conclusion of the board to move you along in the process.
Yep, good. So I guess now the question is to, to your team, in terms of our holidays, what the, what, what's your timeframe? What do you expect you can, can get done and when? And then we'll just get you scheduled.
Chairman, if I just.
Okay. Hi, Dennis, hi.
Hi, just, just to make a comment, because I know we're going to go through an alternatives analysis here. Is it relevant or not relevant? And I wasn't at the site meeting, so that's why I'm just chiming in. In the absence of a wetland delineation, and in the absence of the additional cultural resources that's required. Is it beneficial at this time to move in a direction that may appear to be what we're looking at as a preferred alternative? In the absence of those items? Because then what if as a result of those studies, that now becomes just sort of a curve ball? So I, I just bring that up if, if, because you were discussing, you know, not wanting to maybe extend the process and go through undue expense. So, you know, to me, that sort of, at least from what I have to look at in review, it sort of completes the picture. So that's the only reason why I mentioned it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great comment. Thank you very much, Dennis. Yeah, I mean, we, we recognize visually out there some of the wetland constraints. But they have, the wetlands do have to be delineated. My recollection is that there were some meadow wetlands out there last time around for last application. But again, fortunately, Rick, in his office, will have some information. Rick, I don't know what information you have on the, the cultural aspects that Dennis raised during our last meeting. You might have some of that. But again, Dennis, thank you for reminding us those really need to be addressed. Either that they don't have to be addressed, or that they have to be addressed in a little bit more detail. And maybe you have some of that information from, again, the last round.
And we do on the, on the previous application, the Rose Hill Project, going back to 2015. We have some information from that, you know, soils testing and, and wetland delineations and whatnot. So we have that available.
Do you have anything on what Dennis talked about last time, the cultural important issues?
Yes, on, on the, the Phase 1A and Phase 1B information, we do.
Okay.
For 10650 as well, and 777, if I got the address right, Armac Road?
Yeah, just, just the 773 Armac Road project. Just that property.
Okay, but isn't some of the alternatives proposed going to also be on the 106 Tripp Street property that is in relative close proximity to 773?
Yeah, so we could, we could look into that too, as we progress through.
Great. Very good. Thanks so much, Dennis. Okay, Rick, we'll just leave it to you to contact the, the planning department and development office for when you are ready. When, when you get your next exhibition in, and then we'll get you scheduled.
It sounds great. Sounds like a plan.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful holiday.
Rick?
Yes.
Make sure you also get the information, which the staff will always provide you. But if, if we are looking at a certain date in January, then there's a certain date in early January to get the information.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thanks so much.
Thanks again.
Yep.
Have a great holiday.
Oh, and Helen? Helen, I have one, I have a correction to make. I said that the, my daughter was able to pick the winners four times. It was only three.
It's still pretty good.
All righty, great. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Be safe.
Yep. So we move now to our next item on the agenda. This is a discussion on planning, planning board process. So Jennifer, thank you very much for preparing your memo, which is very, very helpful. And downright irritable. Just have to find it now. Okay, so I guess about a month ago, I wrote a, a note just out of the blue, having heard again, once again, some folks unhappy with the planning board process and the time it takes and the expense it takes. And wondering whether or not there might be ways that we can streamline the process without, you know, compromising the town's position and, and, and our roles. I, I think in general, I come from a, a position that the rules and regulations that we have, you, you clearly have to understand that even the code, all of this has been hashed out. And there were public hearings on these codes and, and people had concerns with them. So it didn't just kind of hatch and just land on a piece of paper. Again, it was probably an arduous process no matter what. So we have to be, I think, very careful in code changes. But by the same token, if we can accomplish things without having to change the code so much and to figure out ways to move people along and still not compromise the process, compromise our review and the hard look that we're, we're, we're charged to make, I think that's the key. So anyway, Jennifer, why don't you lead us through your, your memo, some of the ideas that you've articulated here? And then we'll have a discussion.
Okay, sure. No, I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, your, your memo from about a month ago, Chairman Kirkwood, was, was good timing. Because I know town administration and the town board has also been talking about trying to figure out, you know, ways to streamline the application process. And this is not unique to Newcastle. This is a, a plague on, on every municipality in New York State. Everybody is looking for ways to streamline things to, to benefit the property owners within the town, to make the process as, as streamlined as possible, as you said, without compromising the quality of the review that the board does. That needs to be paramount above everything. So I met with Sabrina and with Bob Seoli and with Felicia. And we went through a couple of concepts, just from a staff and consultant level, for the board's consideration. Those, there are six concepts that are outlined in the memo that I presented to you. We don't profess to have all the answers. This is just meant to be sort of a, a launching point for a discussion. I imagine the town or the, the planning board has other ideas, might not agree with some of the ideas that are outlined in this memo. But it's just meant to be a, you know, the, the first step in a discussion. So with that, I'll just go through each of the six points. The first is the early public hearing point, and that was the concept that Chairman Kirkwood had raised in his memo from about a month ago. With the idea being that we eliminate informal appearances before the board. Chairman Kirkwood suggested for secret type two and unlisted actions and have the first meeting of the application be a public hearing. You have a process like that in, in your code right now for accessory apartments, for your site plan review of accessory apartments. The first time an accessory apartment appears before your board, it's supposed to be here for public hearing. So this would be a concept similar to that. Just for context, and I, I, I want to steer away from discussing specific applications. But just note that the application that we just discussed before this agenda item is a type two action. Just, I'll, I'll put that out there for, for your consideration. I'll also note the New York State town law does not require public hearings for site plans. That's something that's governed by local code. So you could also, sort of a different variation of, of this topic. You could also request that the town board put in a provision in the code for the, the, the planning board to waive a public hearing, to not require a public hearing at its discretion. If there's an application that comes along that really doesn't raise, you know, a lot of important planning considerations. Maybe there's not very many neighbors that would be affected, no visual impacts. You would have the option to, to waive the public hearing for that particular site plan application. So I'll throw that out as well. Another, so another variation on the concept, and this is my point three in, in bullet point one, is to consider a procedure, and I think this is kind of what we have in place right now, but maybe just emphasizing a little bit more. A procedure whereby the presumption is that the second meeting that an applicant attends would be the public hearing. So trying to maybe make better use of the first meeting that the applicant is before the board, the first agenda appearance. Give some clear direction to the applicant as far as what you'd be looking to see at the next meeting, which I think this board, you know, is, is good at doing anyway. But perhaps focusing that, on that a little bit more, so that we can call for a public hearing on the second meeting that the applicant is before you. So that, that's the first concept. I don't know if you want to have a discussion of each concept as we go along, Chairman, or just go through the whole memo.
I guess my question on this is, is this, and I think it's really for you, Jennifer. Is it, is it possible that we retain a good measure of flexibility in governing this and executing this? So that it's not that we necessarily have, first meeting always is going to be a public hearing. But again, guided by staff, does a great job in clearing these, making these, preparing these applications, getting them ready for us. But based on, and, and maybe some of the things that we're going to talk about a little bit later on. Right away, there's a sense that this is going to be pretty straightforward, not going to be controversial. We still have to look at it. We'll give it a hard look, but on those, we can go to a public hearing. And then again, there are those that are going to be type twos that probably we need to go through a, a, a more rigorous process. And, and, and informal hearing would be necessary. We've had, I'm not going to mention names on this, but, or applicants. But, you know, we've had situations where staff has told me, look, the reason we're bringing it to you guys is at this point is we don't think it's ready. But we really need the planning board to basically charge them and let them know it's not moving forward unless they do X, Y, Z. Whether it's legal, whether it's wetlands, whether it's zoning compliance, whatever it might be. And so sometimes we have to be the heavies in there and just say, look, you, you've got to listen to staff and listen legal. We've had the applications, as you recall, Jennifer, where we've had folks tell us what the law is and that you were wrong. So, and, you know, so those kinds of things where we reach those, it seems to me we need to have some sort of flexibility. So the question is, along with it, sorry, is there flexibility? Can we do, can we cherry pick?
I think the answer.
Sort of discriminatory problem.
Yeah, I think the answer is, is yes. I think it's going to require some, you know, coordination between staff and, and you as chairman. Because ultimately, I think, you know, there should be, the, the chairman should be involved in that determination as to whether something's going to be put on the agenda as a public hearing for the first appearance. And, you know, and obviously guided by, by staff and their determination. Just, so, you know, I, I typically don't see, I, I'm not, my office isn't involved in the pre-application process unless we're, we're called in by staff. So a lot of the back and forth that occurs is, is really truly, it's Sabrina, it's, it's Bob Seoli, it's Dennis, Tom DePaul. So I, I typically get introduced to the application when, when the board does. So that might be another. If, you know, if we need sort of a, an adult in the room to tell the applicant, you know, that they need to provide X, Y, and Z material rather than bring it to the board. My office might be able to help with that as well, but I'll, I'll leave that to, to staff to consider.
Staff does a really good job of jawboning these folks.
They do. They do. Absolutely.
I, I think, I think that, you know, for example, you know, we've had applications where, you know, we've said, you know, we're not letting you on until you provide the following documentation. And oftentimes, we send them away. And we definitely call in, you know, you, Jen, or, or Bob as chairman to, to, you know, to, to call them and say, you need to do this, otherwise you're not going to get anywhere. You know, we have an application before you right now that refused to provide, you know, the variations of the design that, that staff felt you needed. Staff felt you needed in order to move the project forward and it's not moving forward until you see those. So, you know, the, the issue with bringing in legal, um, at the time of a pre-application meeting is that we don't have any escrow at that time. You know, it is really just that first stop, what is this application about? What kind of permitting do, do they need? Um, and do they need to be before you at all? You know, sometimes applications are, are, you know, are referred to other boards. Or not necessary to go to the planning board and we kind of steer them in that direction. So it's an opportunity. It, it's an opportunity for, um, for applicants to talk with staff on, you know, a strictly technical level. To make sure that, you know, they want to, what they want to do needs permits and approvals and what those are.
Jennifer.
I agree.
This is a point, uh, I, I'm sorry, Bob, just a point of clarification, if I may. Um, is it, is it, uh? Does an applicant have actually the right to appear before the planning board, uh, without? Uh, the applicant may say, okay, you're telling me I need to do this to get before the planning board, but I don't want to do it. I have a right to appeal my project to the planning board and. Do they have a right to do that? Or do we have the, the authority to say not until you do this, that, and the other thing?
They have an application.
This is a question for Jennifer.
Yeah, yeah, they need to submit the application materials that are required by code. If they're not submitting that information, um, then, then they don't make it to the agenda. Um, and this actually gets to something that's later on in the memo, actually the last point in my memo. Which is creating rules or procedure for the planning board, um, as well, something that, to my knowledge, the planning board has not. Ever adopted, um, but it is a, a common document for doc, for planning boards to have. Uh, to set the, the method by which an application makes it to an agenda. Um, you're welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, Bob.
Well, that's okay. I just wanted to say I agree with, uh, Sabrina a hundred percent. I mean, in our experiences going to these pre-apps, uh, when we tell them they, they have to provide stuff. Ninety-nine point nine five percent of the time they agree to it and do it. So I agree with Sabrina a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, it's, it's self, you know. They're very, very aware that, that this is what has to be done, um, you know, and, uh, you know, years ago. Um, we didn't have any of these, uh, pre-meeting appointments. And the informal hearings therefore were far more important because you just got this raw application coming in. And it was not until finally, um, the town board many years ago agreed to pick up the cost, if you will. Of the so-called free hearings with staff. And initially it was basically you were allowed, I forget what it was, but it was like one hearing for a half hour and very, very limited because we had outside. Uh, consulting building, building for this time. And it got to be to the point where you had to get special permission to have a second or third, uh, meeting. So what we have now is far superior and, and staff really. I mean, really steers folks in the right direction. I think it's a tremendous help to the applicant as well. It's not just us. I, I think. Uh, between Sabrina and Tom and Bob and, and, and Dennis. You know, the input that they give to, uh, an applicant, uh, at that point is, is priceless in terms of time and, and effort.
Keep in mind, guys, excuse me, Robert, keep in mind, guys, there's plenty of time Sabrina can chime in anytime. There's a lot of times the applicants come to us. And by the time we're done with them, they realize going before the planning board is not feasible and they withdraw their application. So they don't waste the planning board's time.
Yeah, well, they, they opt to not even submit an application.
Right.
I, I mean, and, and let, let's be, let's be frank, many of the applications we see now, you know, if it seems like it is easy, it's not. Because, you know, a lot of the easy to develop land has already been developed. So that's always something that when staff sit down with an applicant, we really drill in and really try and identify what are the major issues? That they need to solve before they come before you.
Okay, so we've established that it's a, and I, I totally agree. I was only asking the question because I. I know that we have seen some belligerency in some applications, applicants, and I just wondered, uh. If they, if there was a standing, uh, there for them to say, well, you know, the heck with you, I'm just going to go ahead. And I'm glad to hear that that's not the case. And I totally agree that we would be, we would be in really, really bad shape if we didn't have. Our, uh, town staff, uh, prepare all this stuff for us. So I'm, I'm totally on board with that.
And sometimes we meet two or three times with the applicants. Well, I guess, uh, my sense, uh, and Canaan and Eldad weigh in and Dick weigh in. My, my thought on it is to the extent that again, staff will know these applications quite well. And if we have the ability and it's the staff recommendation is this is one that we could go directly to, 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 uh, public. Um, I, I think we should take that recommendation and I think for the sake of the public as well as the applicant, uh. If we can, it looks like we can, it's just a matter of, uh, procedure. Uh, go to a, a, a first, uh, uh, meeting on a public basis and not hold this up. Um, again, I, I, one of the things I really get frustrated with is the frustration I feel from the public. In coming to an application, whether it's in person, which we haven't done very frequently recently, or even, uh, remotely. And they sit there and it comes, it's nine o'clock and finally they, they hear this is the, the matter. And it's an informal and they get shut down and, and fortunately Dick will always remind me and say, no, we can't listen to him. We have the ability to do that. We do. But even so, it's still not the same and others maybe, uh, want to be there. So it's, it's a little bit frustrating and, um, that would help, I think. On that very important, uh, issue. And, and to Sabrina's point. You know, where we get most of our complaints obviously are on very difficult applications. Or applications where the difficulty sometimes is the personalities. But most often it's because the site is really got, presents some very difficult challenges and some very difficult, uh, constraints. And, you know, everyone's got their hands up there. We want to help if we can, but, uh, how do we do this? Um, you know, within the, the guidelines and the code that, uh, we're charged to, uh, enforce.
So, um, on, on this, this, uh, subject of, uh, public hearing, no public hearing, uh, difficult applications. Uh, first one's informal. Um, I, I. I totally a, agree with the notion that, uh, on these difficult applications, we need to have. Um, the, an informal, uh, presentation of, um, of what the application is before. And try and get sort of the more important things sorted out before it goes public and we involve. Um, uh, the public in matters that the planning board hasn't even had a chance to, uh, to provide some guidance. But, um, but for the first, for the first, uh. I think that, uh, I, uh, this has been my bugaboo for quite a while because. And I'm an architect and I know what it takes to, to, uh, to go through the process of getting engineers together and. Pulling drawings together and as a homeowner here, twice I have gone through, uh, the building department. For applications to do, uh, to do work here and twice I was before the zoning board. And it was relatively, relatively pain, painless for me because it's pretty simple, pretty simple stuff. But as, uh, Sabrina says, there are these applications and, uh, that are, are complicated. And, um, and present some difficulties. And I, uh, my, my concern is that too often these, on these difficult applications. The material that's brought to us almost is a set of, it's beyond dot design development drawings. It's almost very close to construction drawings when it comes to sort of the site plan stuff. And I just wonder if, and then we say, well, you know, we, you know, you didn't look at this, you didn't look at that. And it's just got to be very, very painful for these, uh, for these applicants for whom, you know, some of them are homeowners, some of them are developers or time is money. Uh, the frustration of the, of the, you know, you have to redo the drawings. And I have always tried to argue that it would, for applications like that. It would be really, really helpful to everybody, I think, for the first meeting to be. Just a series of really quick sketch plans that have the key information on it. You know, or perhaps drawn over a, a, you've got to have a site, uh, uh, topography, you have to have a survey that shows the topography. Because that's one of the things that we worry about. And perhaps show, you know, where the, the, the major sort of, uh, tree canopy is. But it would be, eh, eh, to go to the, to the extent of having hard drafted drawings, um. That presume, I think, uh, unfortunately, uh, presume, uh, approval. Is, is, I think it's bad for, um, uh, our public relations. Uh, to, uh, end up having to say, no, wait a minute, you got to go back. Um, and I think it's difficult for the process, uh, that we're all trying to streamline here. So I guess I have a question for, you know, the, the town staff, uh, Bob and Sabrina and. Everybody and, and Jennifer, is there, is there a rational way to do what I'm suggesting or is it get us into trouble? Does this make any sense?
So some codes will have, um, before a formal application is submitted, a, a sketch plan conference. Um, or a, a workshop meeting, uh, where the applicant brings exactly what you've described. The plans more on a, a sketch basis, um, that identifies the key parameters, the key. Pieces, that sort of the bookends, um, that you'd be looking at with respect to the application, but it's done in a more. The review is done in a more informal way. Your comments are not, you know, deemed to be binding. Um, it's, you know, just a more informal sort of roundtable discussion about. Sort of the best, um, uh, you know, planning mechanisms for, for the site. Um, and the applicant can use that information in further developing its formal application. So that there is a process for that, um.
Is that, is that. Jennifer, is that, is that a process only at the staff level or have you seen it where they bring, uh, these materials to, uh, to an informal before board?
I have seen it at an informal before the board.
Uh, it would be great if we actually could extend that as an option, uh, to an applicant. Uh, maybe not mandatory because some may not wish, wish to do it because they really have a very firm idea what they're going to do and maybe it's straightforward, but I, I. If we gave the, the applicants that option, you know, maybe at that first meeting, say, look, this could be a little bit tough. So rather than, uh, again, I think we're all cognizant of the, uh, extraordinary money that could be, uh, spent in these applications. Perhaps we give upfront, uh, that could be, uh, uh, you know, an option, uh, uh, for an informal sketch meeting or. Concept meeting, whatever it might, uh, uh, want to call it. I think that's a great idea because we have, as you know, we have a couple of applications even now, some recent ones where. I think the takeaway from the applicant was, you got to be kidding me. Um, you know, I, I'm all set and I got this place all designed and everything else. And now you're telling me that, uh, you know, the driveway might be wrong, the location's wrong, the septic is wrong and. You know, I got wetlands and tree canopy that I didn't think about and sightlines that I didn't know about and, uh, you know, uh. In that particular one, there, there was, I, I sensed a great deal of frustration, uh, as, as the people left and. We're not really in the PR, uh, business, but it seems to me that we, that would be. A tremendous benefit that this board and this town could, uh, extend to, to an applicant, whether it's a. You know, whoever it is, is an applicant, is a property owner. So that might be interesting, so that we could kind of blend that in as, as an option for folks.
My question is, would it help make it, uh, it seems to me that it would help shorten the process, but would it really shorten the process? If that's the main aim here, right? So it seems like what we are saying is if we spend the time upfront, we're saving a whole lot of other time. Down the road, which is probably being spent otherwise. I mean, I, I, I can remember. A recent project which we had that kind of a issue on where we, you know, where it was already baked and then we had to go back and said. You know, they have to look at a lot of different things again. And had they just come and talked to us very informally, maybe we were able to clarify. Uh, those four or five sort of governing issues for us. The question is, does it save the time? Does it save the town board any time? I mean, the staff any time and not the town board, I meant the staff any time. Um, i- is this something that we can take off of in, in terms of, so it's reducing the, the pressure on the staff? And we're doing and reducing the time.
Well, I don't think, if, if streamlining is really, the only coefficient that we're looking at is really just time. It's, it's money, it's, it's effort. It's, it's waste of, of, of professional time and effort. Um, let me see what we get with these applications. I mean, you know, 20 copies of, of so many things and, you know, some of them. Uh, I mean, these past ones, I mean, you could, you could actually throw your back out, just bring, coming to a meeting. So it's, it's, um, uh, it's more than just the time. So I think it's the whole, the whole thing. And I think, um.
No, when I said time, I meant resources, yeah. No, I was curious to understand, would, would it reduce the time for the staff in any way? And, and when I say time, I mean, you know, everything, resources and sort of reviewing.
No, I, I, I don't think it would. I mean, right now we have a sketch provision and, you know, we offer it up to applicants. Right? You know, th- those that can't seem to make up their mind, they definitely want to do something. We offer up that, that visit before you to talk about what it is they want to do. You know, when we, in, in a more recent application, you know, we had a lot of conversations about alternatives and impacts. And, you know, this applicant was not willing to listen. They didn't want to do a sketch. They didn't even want to come before you. Um, you know, so we, you know, so we said, okay, give us, eh, give us, this is what we need for a complete application. We got most of what we had asked for and then we put them before you and they're still dancing the dance. Um, you, you know, to send them on a, they, they, they didn't want to come in as a sketch. Right now we have a sketch provision where they pay a $200 fee and they come before you. Um, you know, but most applicants today are picking up properties. That had, had previous proposal, proposals on them and they've expired. They try and replicate what was there. Um, or it is, um, happenstance that they're able to do something.
Look, I, I, I don't, I don't want to make references to any, any past or recent applications. I, I think that's a mistake, but. What, uh, I think we need, I, I think the purpose of this, uh, discussion is to find ways to make changes. To make a, a difference. And, um, if, if this option to. Do sketch plans and come in to show, uh, very quickly with a little bit of, uh, relatively little investment in. Uh, consultants fees, um, in, in drawings, in. Putting together piles and piles and piles of drawings that have to go to everybody. Um, if, if, if that is in place, then I am very surprised because I don't remember actually. Seeing what I think we're discussing. I can't remember an application where somebody came in with. You know, sketch plans for alternatives, uh, perhaps there have been a few. But I think we're, we're seeing far many on the other, on the other side of the spectrum. And if, if, if you're saying that they are afforded that opportunity and that they are made aware of that opportunity. And they're deciding not to take it, I think that maybe we ought to be clearer about the necessity to do it. Uh, you know, I, I, I just, I really do. I mean. Part of this is public relations. I mean, it really is. And, and to the extent that, that people get frustrated because. You know, they, they, they make all this effort and then they find out that they just blew a whole lot of money. Uh, and they got to go back and go, you know, start over again, essentially, not start over, sort of completely, but. Uh, it's just, it's, it's bad for, it's bad for, uh, it's, it's bad for town government. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just a bad deal. So I think that we ought to be a little bit, got to find a way to be more aggressive about this.
Also, is there a reason that, that you know of Sabrina as to why they do not take that option? To come before and show a couple of sketch options?
Because most applicants want to do what they want to do with their properties. That, that's the, that's the best answer I can give you. I do not know why. Bob, do you have any sense?
No, they have something in plan, but you know, let's, let's be honest, Sabrina and I and Tom and Dennis always tell them. Look, this is kind of our opinion here. The planning board could have a different opinion on what you do here. We tell them that time and time again. As disclaimer in the meetings because our decision is not final, what's going to be approved. So they know full well going into this thing that you guys. Five different people that look at this very closely, you're going to have different opinions on their layout. In light of that, they still don't want to do a site plan sketch. Disagreeing with this point. So, you know, maybe to Tom's point, maybe they should make it a requirement. So everyone has to see it upfront. And they get a good idea of what they have to do before they spend. So much money on these hard drawings with all these technical drawings that really have to be thrown out after you decide it's no good.
A, a couple of thoughts.
It, it also sort of forces us to, uh, have, you know, be rigorous about our boundaries of where we're going to discuss. Their design, right? And so, I, I mean, I, it, it seems, it seems, uh. Productive to me unless, you know, I'm, I'm hearing otherwise from.
I think that's a good idea. Years ago, Tom being an architect years ago, they used to do everything on tissue paper, Tom, right? They do all the sketches, all the layouts on tissue.
They do all the sketches, all the layouts on tissue paper, everyone would look at it, see which one looks best and they'd spend 10 minutes on each layout.
Bob, I got a cabinet full over here. Would you like it?
Sure.
I just remember that in the, on the Irvington board, there was this one gentleman who would come with plans for. This restaurant that he wanted to put in the, in, in the train, old train station there. And he would keep coming to these sketches, like literally at some point we were all drawing for him because he just couldn't. Get those, you know, get those four requirements we would give him every single time onto the drawing.
Well, you know what I think the problem is nowadays, everything is on AutoCAD. Now you have an AutoCAD technician who has to spend all this time. Years ago, Tom would know, everything drew by hand. Me, myself, I learned on the board, Tom learned on the board. They were very gifted at drawing things out and wise very quickly. Now, because you do everything on AutoCAD, it's very time consuming, very expensive and very costly. So that's one of the detriments to AutoCAD. Everyone's lost the skill on how to have the nice. Tissue drawings freehand.
Dennis, I think you had some, Dennis, you had some comments?
Yeah, I'm, the only correlation I could draw to this process is, you know, when we would have to. In my former life, prepare individual permit applications for the Corps of Engineers. There was a requirement that you had to go through an alternatives analysis, which included the no action alternative. So I don't think that's applicable here. And then when it came to, because obviously we were working for clients who had similar concerns about. Well, how much time are you going to spend on engineering and drawing preparation? And at what level of, you know, drawing preparation can we complete a submittal to the Corps? And usually it was at that 65%. So I guess in engineering world, it was 35%, 65%, 95%. You know, at the 35%, you were still kind of going through the alternatives. And at least for the case of the Corps, obviously the subject matter was wetlands or waters of the US. But I don't see how you can't do something similar here. And I guess it supports, you know, Mr. Curly's point the best that. Yeah, you're at, you're more at a sketch level, just trying to sort of, you know, with private properties, I guess, just determine a location. But that location can sort of as a first flush, take into consideration the steep slopes, wetlands. Um, i- i- issues with trees, you know, and that. So there's a lot of information that me, to me is needed at the start. But then when you start dropping the boxes, if you want to call them, as far as alternative locations goes. It becomes even easier to me to start checking off. You know, in a matrix form, what is potentially the most significant in terms of impact? And what is the least significant? And then, you know, that bounces to Sabrina's point, yeah, but the applicant doesn't like what's the least significant in terms of impact. So I guess I don't have an answer for that at, at the local level of what you guys have to balance. The Corps is my only correlation to this process.
Um, I, I think if, I'm sorry, Eldad, go ahead, please.
Just a, a few thoughts, sorry, Bob. Um, first of all, um, do we have any data as to length of? Time applicants spend, uh, in the, in the process? You know, it's hard to improve anything if we don't measure it. So I'm just curious if we have any idea, has anyone ever looked back on? Uh, average times.
We, we are, we're trying to pull something together at my office right now, based on the history of applications that has been requested by the town board.
Okay. Type of application, so another, this is the average for a subdivision, this is the average for.
Well, we're gonna, we're going to go back, I want to say, and Felicia, correct me if I'm wrong, to 2013 or 2014. And associate applications with, you know, the same applications. You know, if we had a site plan subdivision, steep slope, wetland, you know, how many do we have? What was the differences, just really trying to do a diagnostics on all the applications that have been before you? And what the average time from when the application first appeared before you to when it was approved by you. So, so we are not, we are not going to time. Put timeframes around satisfaction of resolution conditions, just appearance before the board.
Okay, so I think that's very interesting and can be very helpful. Um, because, and then at least we have sort of an idea. Um, you know, is, is the process faulty or has things changed over time? Um, another question I have is, I, I think probably more geared towards Jennifer. Jennifer, let, uh, and I know your, your memo was awesome and we probably, we've only like touched the, just a little bit of it. Um, but let's say we were to implement, um, any of the, any or all of the recommendations or some combination of the recommendations in the memo. Um, how challenging, uh, is it to reverse something? Let's say we make a, a, a decision on something and it doesn't work out the way we think it's going to. Is that problematic?
So it depends on the method by which you're making the change. If it's a legislative change to the town code that the town board has to make. Then in order to reverse that, there has to be another local law adopted by the, the town board. Uh, to further amend the code, which requires public hearings, public notice, all of that. Um, if you're going to implement the change just by, you know, different practices by, um. You know, in the pre-application process, uh, with town staff, consultation with the chair, that sort of thing. That, that's easy, uh, to, to, you know, to change course on. Um, the other item is the, the rules of procedure. Um, that's the last point in the memo. Um, that's a document that is, uh, adopted by the planning board. Um, so that's enough and not subject to public hearing. So that's another, um, sort of quick fix that you can, you can make a change. Determine it's not working the way you intended it to, um, and, and make a further change to correct, um, what's not working.
Got it. Um, so I, I'm gonna say something that might be controversial. Um, but, uh, I, I don't know that the problem. Again, the problem, uh, is the process necessarily. Um, I don't think that being in front of a planning board for a long time is inherently bad. Um, sometimes some applications require that and, and sometimes it's annoying to be a member of the public and. So be it, um, you know, but I, I think that the, the problem, if there is one. Uh, is probably more likely us as opposed to the process. Not any one of us individually, obviously, but more like conceptually, um. Not that the process has, you know, uh, it's hard to, it's hard to legislate nuance, right? And, and, um, to say that there should be this many number of, uh, public hearings and no more, no fewer. That doesn't make any sense, right? Because every application is different and sometimes, and every applicant is different. Uh, and so it's a little challenging, I think, to, to sort of legislate a streamlined process. Um, without having negative consequences. Um, but I think that, and, and, um, you know, the last applicant that we were talking about. Uh, last application that we're talking about, then, and, and I raised my point that I, I have been raising that I'd like to continue to talk about. And I think this is an appropriate forum. Is this idea of what are we actually commenting on? And what should perhaps we should consider not commenting on? You know, and I often come back to think about this and maybe there's disagreement in the, you know, among the board. And I think that's fine, but I often think that if it were as of right, but for X, Y, and Z, then let's just consider the. The X, Y, and Z as opposed to everything else. Um, you know, if a use is the issue, then the bulk and the sighting of it. Maybe isn't something we need to spend too much time on if there are concerns about the use, because it's a use driven. Uh, you know, the reason that the person is before us. You know, I, I, I am an urban planner, I am a zoning specialist by training, I believe in zoning. And, um, you know, we have rules and laws on the books that say you can do this and you can't do that. If someone is in violation of those rules, uh, and they're asking for some sort of variance, then, then we need to consider the merits of, of that. But, but sometimes I think that if we. Uh, you know, a, 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 a private owner comes before us only if they have to. And then we should only consider the thing that they're in front of us for. Um, that is hard to, uh, legislate, um, because we need to have flexibility. We need to, um, sometimes, you know, an application calls for a little bit more of a broader review. But I think perhaps if, if, you know, if, if we can all think about. Where we, our, our opinions are necessary and helpful and whether or not, then, then, then I think, then, uh. Uh, we might be able to streamline certain processes, certain applications, that is to say.
I, I guess, I guess my response would be that. First of all, zoning boards and planning boards provide a different function in town government. And, um, the, the with, and I, 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 I tried to make the point, um. Uh, earlier this evening that. That you, I, and perhaps I'm wrong legally, but I think I'm right about this. That it's, it's, it's not within our discretionary authority to say, well. Gee, we like these, these people only have this problem. So when it comes before us, we're only going to review their application in the context of that particular matter. Uh, I think I'm right, well, once it comes before us as a site plan review. We have the obligation to look at all of the aspects of the site plan that's presented to us. And for certain applicants, I can understand why this is very frustrating, you know, gee. I just wanted to put my swimming pool over here and all of a sudden I'm, you know, enmeshed in. You know, all these other things that I didn't know I was gonna have to deal with. And I, you know, I feel sorry for them, I, you know, I really do. But if that's, if, if, if that's a, if that is a significant enough problem. Uh, that, uh, burden that's being put on the applicant, then somebody needs to change the town code. I mean, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything, you know, we can do about that. I don't think we have discretion about to say, well, we're not gonna look at the trees, right? Or we're not gonna look at the wetlands because this person, uh, just really wants us to know, to, to know if he can put a swimming pool over here. I just don't think that we have the, the discretion to do that. Uh, I do agree, I think, with what Kanan is saying and, and perhaps some of what you're saying is that. Is that there are really two matters at hand here. One is the process we go through and how we can streamline it. And the other is how we behave inside of that process as a board. And, uh, I'm concerned about both. Uh, I'm very much concerned about how we behave as a board. I think we need to look at these things because we have no choice to look at these things. Um, but I think the way in which we talk to each other about these things. And by talking to each other, talking to the, to the, or talk over each other or by each other in front of an applicant. Um, causes a certain amount of confusion. And I can imagine, I, I, I just know for a fact that they, someone could either meetings say, what just happened here? I don't know what I'm supposed to do, then probably have to go to Sabrina and to Bob and to Dennis and to Jen and say. Somebody explain to me what just happened here. And, you know, Dick will have an opinion about something, Al have a different opinion about it. Uh, each of us will give our opinions and they may be opinions that are cross purposes to each other. And I think that we need to find a way to behave better by being a little bit harder on ourselves in, in every meeting. Doing our best to come to consensus on things, right? Uh, in order to have a more clear sort of understanding that we can give to the applicant. So that they in confidence can prepare the documents, uh, the burdensome documents, uh, from their point of view, probably in many cases. Uh, in order to get to the best, the next meeting and feel as though they're making real progress.
So if, if you're saying that we should have a con, some sort of consensus in terms of what we are giving, that, what information we are giving. Is this something that we would have to talk about earlier? Because we could widely disagree with each other and how do we, you know what I'm saying? Like, how do, uh, there is no way but to have that discussion at some point.
We have to have it in the public eye, you have to have it in front of the public, you can't have it behind the scenes.
Okay.
And you can disagree with each other as, if there's, but there has to be three of you. That gives, at least three of you that gives direction to the applicant. Cause, and that, that doesn't necessarily mean that there's going, that the whole board is going to agree. On a particular direction, um, that, that, that you're gonna give the applicant, but consensus meaning at least three of you.
I guess what I'm saying is that, Tom, it's, it's sort of hard to get to that until we've had that discussion. And, and there are, there are easier applications when we come to that consensus quickly. And then there are applications where we might disagree. Um, and I think I'm, I'm understanding the point where that. The applicant is coming with the mindset of this is my, and, and that's what I heard from what Sabrina said. And Sabrina, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard was. They come with that, with the intention that this is really my property, I should be able to do what I need to. And what we are saying is there is a law, there are some procedures. And we, as a town, uh, as a planning board are looking at it and are, and are helping you get to your, your best. Uh, to get, to get to the best solution given the code and given, given the procedures we have. Um. And, and that's in conflict with each other right there. So i- i- it just becomes, uh, it's important for anyone. Who has a piece of land to know that it is not necessary that it will just be. Because I own it, I can do whatever, right? And, and, um, at the same time, I do think, uh, and Eldad, I think I disagree in terms of. Um, the idea of the procedures is, it's some sort of guide map, right? It's some sort of like, we're going to try to every, I mean, I, I, yes, every, every application is different. But if we are gonna look at the last 10 years, we're gonna be able to say, well, 50% of them come for. X, Y, and Z function, and this is the amount of time we are taking. And, and I love that idea of like having some sort of understanding of what the historical data shows. And then it, then we can say, fine, if we're really taking that much time. And this, this procedure can be straightened out, then let's talk about some procedure within that broad bucket. Where that if they come for, you know, for sideline change, or, or I'm sorry, um, you know. Location of a new, uh, additional building or additional ancillary, uh, used building, whatever it is, like. Having those categories and understanding how many applications we've heard and what's the average time on each of those? That might give us really good information to say. Well, 50% of the applicant, applications that are coming in front of our, us is about X or Y. And it is taking on average this much time, uh, and maybe we can make this particular process better. And 50% of our applicants will find their life better because of those rules, because of those changes.
I, I think one aspect, uh, just before I forget what, um, but I agree with that. But I think the issue in, in the, actually to crystallize this. I think even my concept was that it is sort of expediting. This was certainly not, I don't think it's something that we should be doing, um, in connection with complicated applications. And again, that's why I asked Jennifer if we had that ability to be flexible and making that determination upfront. Without getting ourselves into legal problems. There are applications to Eldad's point that, that should be before us because they're complicated, they're long. I don't think we should be treating someone's backyard, wetland, buffer, setback application with the same sort of treatment. That someone's coming in with 16, uh, house subdivision, obviously. So, um, that's the issue and I think I was coming from it, from that standpoint. Because I think it's the smaller folks who seem to just get. You know, what, what am I doing, what's going on here? I mean, when we deal with the professionals here, they, they have a good professional team, they know exactly what the story is. They're working with staff, staff knows how they operate, et cetera. And, um, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna mention his name, but there's one particular attorney who used to practice a lot before us. And every, at the, at the beginning, before he spoke, he said, I am here tonight. To talk about this and I want to get to the point where I have clarity on the tree clearing. And that would be it. He would take bite sized pieces off a large, a large project and just do it that way in a very orderly fashion. It was very clear and he just went on, so I'm here tonight. I want to end up where we are in a position to close the public here. I mean, that's my goal tonight, he would articulate it. And then, of course, that was very helpful to us, uh, is very helpful to us, I think. When we have someone that, that crystallizes that way when it's a complicated one. But it's the smaller folks that, that tend to get very upset. Uh, and, and, and rightfully so, uh, it costs tons of money for all different kinds of reasons. We don't see a sketch first, uh, the wrong consultant, the consultant who's unfamiliar with us. You know, they hire someone from Brooklyn and it comes up here and it's like, you know, yo, what's going on? And, uh, it's very different. So it's, it's a very different kind of situation. So a lot of these applications that go longer, sometimes where they should be simpler, it's, it's the folks themselves, it's not the process. But my take on this is really, uh, again, I guess I should have crystallized this right from the get go is trying to help the smaller, our neighbors. When they have an application, they're caught in this web. When they have an application, they're caught in this web, caught. You know, they're, they're, you know, our, our code requires them to appear before us, or the ZBA, wherever else it is, but just us. And one other quick thing on 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 the um the uh quick planning uh uh public hearing is we haven't seen very many of these uh recently, but in the past, we used to constantly refer wetlands, for example, to the ERB and the Conservation Board sometimes had referrals. So if we have a referral, I would say that, again, leading with staff's input, that referral should be made right upfront, so we don't take uh the time. We've had that in the past where all of a sudden we're to our second informal, oh, by the way, let's get the ERB to weigh in on this. And that's, I think that's unfair to the applicant as well. So I think we should have that on our checklist to make sure if there's a referral that has to go to someone else, ARB, ERB, Conservation Board, whatever it might be, uh we do it soon, uh right away. Obviously, the ZBA is a di- a different situation.
Can I respond to a couple of points?
Absolutely, please.
Okay, great. There was a couple um points that I wanted to to bring up. One, Tom's point about providing direction to the applicants, I thought was a good one. And I think, you know, to Canaan's point that there, you need to have some discussion to get to that consensus point about what you're gonna at the end of the the meeting, direct the applicant to come back to you with, or direct the applicant to respond to. Um even if the discussion takes an hour, two hours, I think if by the end of that, I think it's important to come back, revisit the topics that you've discussed, and give very clear instructions to the applicant. Make sure that everybody walks away from that meeting with an understanding of exactly what the planning board expects uh upon resubmission. Um and I think that 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 that's an excellent point. Um also, the, the point made by Tom and by Eldad kind of on on different ends of the spectrum. So um Eldad suggesting that if an application is only bef- you know, but for X, the application wouldn't be before the planning board, the planning board should focus on X, um and not necessarily the other items within your purview. And Tom's point being, well, we have an obligation, once it's before us, to look at everything. I think that the the reality is probably somewhere in the middle, because I think that every application is different. I think every application has a different, you know, scope to it, um different scope of impacts, different context. Um so I think it's not maybe quite as black and white as one view versus the other, but I think the balance is in the middle um to to maybe not focus only on the X, um which is why it's before you. But if there's something other than the X that requires attention, you really should be looking at that, that, that item. Um so I think.
I was really hoping one of us would be right.
Oh geez, the beat goes on.
So those are just a couple of points that I wanted to respond to. Um Chairman, do you want me to move on? I know it's
Yes.
You've got other things on the agenda, but you know, I think that this discussion is really good.
I think this was the major one. And it it was a great conversation. And I have to tell you, uh this conversation and the hearings, I I just love listening to the input. And again, to Canaan's point, I don't reach any conclusions. I I really listen and 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 hear what, how everyone else is weighing in on something, because the points that are constantly raised by board members here and staff are critically important. I I've often come out of these more confused than the applicants, because wow, those are good points. And I, that that changed my mind on this too. So uh it's just terrific. Anyway. Jennifer, go on, please.
Okay, so if it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna move on to item number two in the memo. After an hour of discussion, um and that is.
Could you put that up? Could you put it up again on the screen?
Put it up on the screen?
Please, because of my copy, I I don't have the first pages. I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold on, I I don't have it up on my screen, so I'm gonna have to find it.
It was up a minute a while ago.
I can do it if you guys want.
Oh, that would be great, Canaan. Thank you.
Please.
I think I'm.
Yep, there you are.
There you are.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, so number two is administrative lot line amendments, or I'm sorry, adjustments. Um the town administration has asked us, uh my office, to prepare a local law that would allow for administrative lot line adjustments. So, meaning the, that application would not come to you for approval. If someone wanted to simply shift their lot line uh between two or more lots um in a way that um uh you know, would not create an additional lot, um wouldn't create zoning nonconformities. Um you you, there would be an administrative process whereby the town engineer uh would review that plot, would review that lot line adjustment plot, um and would be able to sign off on it. Um this is common more so upstate, but there are um communities in Westchester that do have administrative lot line adjustment provisions. Uh Town Cortland, Village of Sleepy Hollow, and Village of Portchester are a couple um in Westchester. Um and this is just, this is one way to not necessarily streamline your process, because it wouldn't be before you, uh but a way that might help um, you know, your neighbors, property owners in town, uh to have a quicker, more streamlined, efficient, and less expensive process to go through when we're just talking, when we're talking about shifting a lot line one way or the other. Um so that is a local law that's um under consideration. It has not been introduced yet by the town board. Um I expect it's gonna be introduced sometime in January. I would have provided you with a copy, but since the town board hasn't introduced it yet, I didn't think that would have been appropriate. Um but it it will be um referred to as my understanding for for your review and comment.
So Jennifer, uh real quick, uh did I read you, understand you correctly, that uh if such a lot line change uh puts, for instance, an accessory structure uh within a setback and is a a a consequence of violation of zoning, it has to go before the ZBA, for example?
It may. Um there are mechanisms that can be um built into the, to the code to allow that lot line adjustment to occur if there are like minor zoning inconformities that would result, that would not require the applicant to go get a variance, uh but would still allow the lot line adjustment to go forward. So that is possible. It's all a matter of how the the town wants to to handle it. There's, there's lots, lots of ways to skin the cat, so to speak.
Thank you.
Jennifer, how do you define minor?
Again, that's gonna depend on on the town. Um in in one municipality where this uh particular mechanism is in their code, they did an analysis of um of some of the the lots that saw lot line adjustments over the past X number of years and determined that um a seven percent, I think it was seven, seven percent um zoning uh deviation in zoning um for the nonconformity is what they would consider to be minor based on their lot size and um and other factors that they they reviewed. So it it depends on the context of the municipality as far as what's minor.
So with respect to the planning board, uh as far as I can figure out right quickly right now, it seems to me the only thing that we worry about that might uh be affected by this would be grading and clearing limit lines. And uh it seems to, I mean, we think those things are important, but I could, you know, I could see that it like, it's not unreasonable to sort of forgive that in the interest of uh, you know, these other, these, these other uh advantages of doing this. That's my opinion anyway.
Yeah, and my understanding is that through this process, the clearing and grading limit lines would not change. If they did need to change, then they'd have to come to your board um to change those limit lines.
Oh, I see. Interesting. Okay, that's, that's good. That's good to hear. Thank you.
My recollection is we've had very, very few uh lot line changes that have ever triggered any sort of questioning or issues, but we have had them. Um so and and again, I think for the most part, these things go through very quickly. We we generally uh one meeting, two meetings, usually it's a second meeting just to approve the resolution.
Hmm.
Um I I wonder if 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 uh we downsize the requirements of uh the the degree of detail and sketches and drawings, et cetera, whether or not that would help the process. Um I can even think of a fairly recent one where the lot line change was successful, but that was only uh after tremendous, before it ever got to us, tremendous uproar from neighbors. So um one wonders, uh again, um again, I'm I'm very careful about uh changing those kinds of um discretionary uh operating authorities for ZBA, for the planning board. Um there happen circumstances. And I and I guess frankly, you know, the Village of Portchester and and Sleepy Hollow, they've got different issues and you know, those lot line changes might be a foot or two just to, you know, accommodate a sidewalk or a parking lot or something, or another parking space. So I think we have some differences. I, you know, I I'd be careful with it. I would love to make sure that we do it as as expedited in a fashion as possible. But again, we have had um, we've, we've made some changes. And um, you know, we have um, well, I don't want to go into the current stuff. But anyway, there are, there are some issues in terms of uh things that are sometimes not picked up but for a public process. So, number three?
Okay, moving on. Number three, um pre-meeting coordination with chairman, staff, and consultants. Um this is a matter that that would not require legislative amendment. Um under current procedures, um and Sabrina, Bob, please, you know, feel free to to chime in if I'm I'm uh misstating this, but under current procedures, uh Sabrina will typically uh reach out to to Chairman Kirkwood um in advance of the meeting to first review the agenda um uh to make sure there's concurrence about the applications that are gonna be on the agenda based on the the current state of the application. Um and then in the the day or two before the meeting, uh Sabrina will will reach out to Chairman Kirkwood to run through the items on the agenda and just give a quick synopsis of any, you know, hot button items that that should be discussed um and things to focus on. Um what I, what what's considered in the, in the memo is to expand this and formalize that process a little more to include the town engineer, um the town environmental coordinator and and my office um to almost create like a little mini agenda for each of the the application items um so that we can come away with, you know, a bullet point of a couple items um to highlight during the the meeting discussion uh for Chairman Kirkwood to to kind of direct as far as what what are the highlights that that need to be discussed um to kind of focus the discussion during the meeting. Um I have this process in place with each of the other planning boards that I do represent um in the Hudson Valley. Um and I I feel like it works well. Um I think it's a good chance for for each of the the staff members or or consultants to kind of highlight the important salient parts in their their memo to the board. Um make sure that, you know, everyone's on the same page as far as what the targeted action item for the meeting is, whether it's you know, scheduling a public hearing, closing a public hearing, circulation, circulation of notice of intent, uh whatever it may be that we're we're targeting for that, that particular meeting. Um so as I mentioned in the memo, not foolproof, um but certainly uh a way that helps set the stage for for an efficient meeting.
I don't know. I think this is a bad idea. If we do this, Kirkwood's gonna ask for a raise.
Double.
It's like a lot of work, Bob, but I think it's a great idea.
No, it it is a good idea. I mean, Sabrina really handles so much of this and and really clears the deck. But sometimes um I'll get a separate call from, you know, Bob or Dennis or or even legal. And it might be better to have, you know, something scheduled on a Thursday or Friday beforehand, so everyone knows it's gonna be three o'clock, and we're gonna spend our 15 or 20 minutes just going through this. And um and if there's something else that comes up, uh so it's in a coordinated uh fashion. I think it would be helpful. I mean, I I again, I I don't think it's gonna be monumental, because I think all the stuff that that Sabrina does for the board and for me is is clears uh 99.9% of this, and she identifies all the issues and then we go forward that way.
Right. I I also think, um, you know, we need to be careful about timing of the discussion, because you know, staff are really busy and, you know, sometimes you do not get staff memos until the weekend before the meeting. You know, we try and get you as much on that Friday before the meeting, but you know, it really depends on where staff are being pulled in other directions that really, you know, so so I would be, I I just want to be careful. I I'm all for for scheduling a meeting and having it on the calendar routinely, but also be cognizant of timing and and staff's ability to get the review done for that discussion.
I think it could even happen the afternoon of of the meeting, you know, Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, I think that might be a better, that might be better timing for all staff to be equipped to speak about their issues. Because Bob, as you know, a lot of times they say, you know, I know that Bob is working on his memo. I know he's working on these particular areas. Um or Dennis is now reviewing this. I don't know what the results are gonna be.
Yep, absolutely correct. Yeah. So that might be a better idea, Sabrina.
Yeah, I I like the afternoon of the meeting, but but again, but I I think that that's that that discussion is different than establishing the agenda. Or if if we do a preview of something and we decide it needs to be removed, the discussion with you to let you know we're gonna remove it.
Yep.
And going back to our first discussion point, the um, when you set the agenda, well, I guess you'd need to have it uh earlier. I was gonna say, maybe that could be the time when you discuss with the chairman about whether an application is gonna be on for public hearing, but for notice purposes, you're gonna need to know.
Yeah, we need to know well in advance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, but but here, here's also a suggestion too. You know, I, you know, something like a lot line change. If it's not, if it's not administrative approval and it has to go before your board, um you know, we can set that as a public hearing for the first meeting, because it's relatively easy. Um you know, if it's a straightforward application, we could, we could say, you know what, this goes immediately to public hearing, but we could also, instead of doing it at the first meeting, make sure that that second meeting is the public hearing. You know, no going back and forth, but you know, make every, not letting an application get beyond meeting number two without a public hearing.
Right.
I mean, because we do have a timing issue. You know, we require things to be submitted uh three weeks before the meeting. Um and then whole, you know, hopefully staff can get to it before, you know, the the week before the meeting. Um you know, if we can't get to it, then it's hard to say that it goes to public hearing on the first meeting unless it's an already written script that we know if it checks this box, it goes to public hearing, like accessory apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah. Accessory apartments are something that I don't know why we handle anymore.
Wow, it's funny that you mentioned that.
Nice lead.
That's number five.
There we go.
Getting ahead to number five on the memo is um consideration of making accessory apartments administrative review um for for town staff similar to a building permit. Um so considering whether, you know, those lists of criteria that you have in the code, when you look at an accessory apartment about, you know, where the garbage is stored and the exterior appearance and all of that, if staff can check those boxes, um you know, maybe there should be consideration made to making that administrative permit instead of requiring them to come to your board for a site plan.
Yeah, that that might work. The, back on the other one, um what I see is I'm concerned a little bit that everybody's gonna have a meeting on a particular project at the same time. Whereas, you know, most, everybody, uh staff and um you know, people on a board, a few at least, yeah, you know, they have other things and commitments that come up. So it's, and if you have, if you have to have all those people there, I would assume you need to have a sentence that says you really don't need all those people, that the major e- element of this is environmental or something like that, because otherwise you're gonna have people listening on the phone. Uh in essence, they have to be paid. And and I also recommend a a a modest increase in the chairman's, you know, uh compensation for this. Go from zero to one, I don't know, but but it's, but it's, you have to avoid time consume, uh consumption. I see a goal that that if you can get all this stuff done early, then it runs smoothly or smoother. And so the costs at the back end are reduced, but the cost in the front end may be reduced, I mean, increased. Uh you know, so I I think there's a little maybe adjustment you could make. You know, someone should have the discretion as to whether all these people would convene in a, a meeting.
Right. So, so the people involved would be Chairman Kirkwood, Sabrina, Bob Seoli, Dennis Corelli and myself, maybe, maybe the building inspector on a case by case basis.
Yep. Okay.
And typically when, when I have these, you know, sort of pre-meeting meetings in, in other municipalities, it's just by conference call. And it's, you know, we spend maybe five minutes, five to 10 minutes on each application, just kind of hitting the high points. So that the, you know, in 20 minutes, 30 minutes, we're able to kind of get through the full agenda. So shouldn't be.
You say that that's, if you think that'll work. I think people are gonna have conflicts. And, you know, it's gonna be hard to maintain the timing.
Duly noted.
Good day. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Accessory apartments.
Okay, should we, I can skip to accessory apartments, then we can go back to the waiver of jurisdiction if you want. So a, as I mentioned, yeah, accessory apartments, it seems like when the board does review accessory apartment site plan applications, it's, it's a pretty routine kind of review. Sort of the same issues come up. Most of the issues are, are addressed by code, just making sure that the application hits those items that are, that are listed in the code as far as the accessory apartment site plan requirements or concerns. So when you have applications that, that do seem routine each time they come to you, you know, the, the thought is that maybe those should be an administrative permit instead of coming to the planning board, which will save the applicant a lot of time and expense. And I think a lot of the expense too will be saved, you know, on some of these applications, if they need a variance, you know, that, that just further extends the time that they're, they're before the boards. When there's the referral and then that has to come back to you. So obviously if they, if they need a variance, they need a variance. They're still gonna have to go to the zoning board. But if we can eliminate one of the boards, I think that'll be helpful to, to the applicant. So something to consider.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to loosen this up so that we get more people doing it in the community, you know, so that people, you know, couples or whatever who are starting out in, in their profession, they have someplace that they can go to that they can afford more readily than other places. Or it's a, an expansion of the family and there's a, a separate family unit that's gonna be, you know, in there that, that is related to the owner. You know, so all those things I think make it, could make it simpler. I think you, you have got a great start here. And I, I don't, I don't see the, really the value of, of going to the, to the planning board on all of them, just on the ones that have, you know, these need for variances. I think that, that's the way I would do it.
What percentage of the applications do you think are, are this administrative accessory apartments?
Right now, we don't have any, right Sabrina? The, the, all accessory apartments have to come before the planning board for site plan review.
No, I think my question's different. My question is how many such reviews do we see a year?
Oh, how many accessory apartment applications? That would be a Sabrina question, I think.
Yeah, I'm gonna say maybe two.
Really? Okay.
It's really petered out.
It has, but.
Look at the number of applications you review, you reviewed this past year. Right? There, there were very few planning and zoning, there were more zoning applications than planning applications, but building permits were way up, which is why zoning variances were, were up. But planning applications is, you know, you've had very short agendas.
Sabrina, maybe, or Jennifer, maybe you can help me with this. I'm embarrassed. I should know this. This, this category of accessory apartments, are these limited to apartments which are within or attached to principal residence? Or does it also include accessory buildings?
It includes both.
Yeah.
It includes both. So the, the intent of this language would be to include those accessory buildings as an administrative action as well.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's, if that gets, if you advertise that, then you may have more people doing it, which I think is a benefit to the community.
So it does raise questions about, I mean, it's a little bit easier to see that an accessory apartment which is attached or within a principal existing residence would have little or no impact with site plan impact with regard to stuff that we're supposed to worry about. But a, a new building on the property might very well. Is there any thought to making a distinction between those so that these matters that a new building on the, on the property get looked at?
I think that distinction makes some, makes some sense. We've had some of those applications where it was a little bit more involved because of an existing building or a building that was halfway built and, or use in an existing building. And I think in some cases, we even had some environmental applications that were, were triggered.
Yep. One near Tom.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah, of course. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I forgot about that one. Yes, of course. That was, yeah, that was very substantial.
So the thought would be if the accessory dwelling is in a new accessory building detached?
But if it's. I think detached building is, is the difference, yeah.
Yeah. A new detached accessory building would require planning board approval for the, for the, for the apartment.
I would say not necessarily even new. I mean, you could have something that is a barn that's gonna have to be reconditioned, redone, septic has to be put in. Stormwater has to be configured. So it gets to be a little bit more involved. I'd say any sort of outbuilding, accessory building might, it might be worthwhile to look at. I don't, you know, there's, I, I can't imagine, we haven't had any kind of issue on anything when it's been within the buildings that, that you guys, that staff hasn't raised and taken care of.
Okay. Good point.
All right. So the last point in the memo here, adopting planning board rules of procedure. So rules of procedure kind of fill the gaps of the, the code and set forth things that, that sometimes are, are addressed in the application package itself, like when the submission deadline is, when you hold your meetings each month, how to reach an agenda, what you need to have in order to get on an agenda. Conduct at public hearings, if you wanna set time limitations per, you know, per person that, that comments, you know, three to five minutes. You know, that you have to conduct yourself with decorum and, and all of those sorts of considerations. It, it can be a useful tool for some of the things that we were talking about tonight, like applicate, you know, consultation with the chairman as far as when an application is going to be on the agenda for the first time as a public hearing, that that's an option for applicants at the discretion of staff and, and the chairman. It's also a useful tool to kind of bring some transparency to, to the public and to applicants that come before the board as far as what the process will be, how the board conducts itself, what to expect for both the applicants and members of the public that come before the board. Sort of demystifies the process a little bit for those applicants or members of the public that don't want to comb through 100 pages of, of zoning code to read the procedures.
Don't we have some of this already, Sabrina, on your application forms? Right? A lot of it, I think.
Yeah, no, we have this.
Yeah, I mean, we can codify it and I guess Wolf has got standards that we could grab onto. I mean, some of the things that's, you know, it's, it's just self apparent and obvious in terms of decorum and that, those sorts of things. Okay, we certainly can, you know, look at that if that demystifies any part of the process. I think that would be beneficial. Good. Great. Anyone else? Anything? Any thoughts?
Yeah, interesting.
No, I think it's all great. You know, in the end, sort of now going back through everything we've discussed, I think that sort of the high points in terms, I think, at least the ones I can remember in terms of, of expediting the process to the benefit of the applicant. I'm sort of less concerned about the impact on, on the board. I am concerned about the impact to staff time and their efforts. But the, the, I'm still trying to wrestle with this preliminary hearing, public hearing, coming in with sketches. If there, if, if we could have some sort of, of a, maybe readout or a better sort of analysis of this on a piece of paper for our next discussion, I think that would be helpful because I think that's one of the big items that, that we discussed, but I'm not sure that, that I anyway have a good handle on what the right way to go would be.
Yeah, but just to add to Tom's point, the, you know, if you, if you come in with just a sketch, that's almost like a two dimensional approach. We need to, you know, I think the team would need to know what are the contour lines? The contour lines are easy to access and find. And so, you know, that helps. And, and where are the, where are photos that come with it? To show, all right, well, look, it's all full of trees or it's, it's an open field, a meadow, you know, things like that, which are easy to get, inexpensive to get, I think would help the, you know, the first meeting.
I, I also think that, that to the extent that we can legitimately without violating our responsibilities under the, the state statute, to the extent that we can, and also our town code responsibilities, that we can shed some of these appearances in the favor of applicants and town staff also, because if we do that, there's less for them to do. Would be, is a good thing. And if we could, as a consequence of this discussion, maybe come up with a, a couple of sentences or bullet points that maybe get us a little bit closer to that conclusion, that would be helpful.
Yep. And I, I think in connection with the, the sketches, perhaps we, we'll just, it might be just marketing and, and a little bit more from staff when you first hear of an application, just say, look, you really ought to take a look at this on a sketch basis. Don't spend a whole lot of time. Great idea. We understand what you're talking about, but why don't we just get this into the planning board with us and, and see if that helps you? Obviously it's up to them to say no, but I, I, maybe if we, if the word gets out that we're inviting this and using this more effectively as a tool, perhaps other folks would take advantage of it. I, I agree. I mean, at this point, I, I, I couldn't agree more with Sabrina in that but people come in with, they wanna do what they wanna do and they have this idea. They want to put a garage up and that's it. And we can't sit there and tell them, well, you can't have a garage. What you should have is a pool. It doesn't work. So anyway, I think it, that could help if we start to push it that way.
And then the, the other thing which is, it could be folded into procedure somehow, maybe, I maybe I'm being too hard on us, but I mean, I really think that, that we ought to, we really ought to work within our meetings with applicants to really figure out how to, to come to a conclusions among ourselves about definitive conclusions among ourselves, the extent that we can. And if it means, you know, taking a vote or if it means an informal sort of a, you know, do we have three A's on this particular, you know, subject and direction? Maybe we have to do that or should do that. But i- if we can wrestle some of these things to ground among ourselves before we ask the applicant to come back with material and then for us to go over the same thing again, I, I think that would be a responsibility that, that we really ought to take on.
Great. I think that would be helpful. Good. Okay. Good. Thank you very much, Jennifer.
So let's put into practice one thing.
Sure, absolutely. Please, yes.
How would, let's summarize what it is you'd like staff to follow through regarding this process discussion for your next discussion of process.
Well, you're starting this already?
Yes. Well, I think, I think, you know, listen, you know, Bob, Dennis and I try and, and kind of get the board to come to conclusions. So it's clear for an applicant, you know, I definitely do so in my memorandum to you where I summarize what has happened and how the applicant has responded. So, so just let's try it tonight. So for this process discussion, so Felicia is clear. You know, as she, as she writes up the memo, you know, we, we have committed to synthesizing the length of time per application that it has been taking to get through the planning board process. And I think that is A.
Yep.
Well, I just, I just gave you, I just gave you three points. Perhaps there are more.
But I think, first of all, we can't, obviously the, the things that are going to involve code, we can't change those. So that's, we're talking about process and procedure. So I, I would, I would say that we should look at and, and start as soon as we can on that discretionary public hearing on certain applications. Again, with the lead coming from staff, so that there's a comfort level that we do not have to go through an informal first on a given application. I think that would be helpful. To the extent that we have people coming in, to the extent that we can get them to use the informal process for a very informal sketch, I think we should do that. I don't know if you put that in the instructions. I don't know how we do that, but that's something, I guess we have to do. So the, the lot line adjustments, Jennifer, that's a code change?
Yeah, that's a code change that will be coming to you, provided that the town board introduces it in January.
So the pre-meeting coordination, I think we should try to start that next time around, next year. And perhaps on the afternoon of the planning board meetings, it really doesn't involve the board so much. So I think we should try to do that. The waiver of jurisdiction.
We didn't talk about that. We skipped over that one. So you, you do currently have waiver of jurisdiction for subdivisions, for resubdivisions, lot line adjustments and lot mergers. Where you find there's no important planning issues that need to be addressed. I think that the way, the, the way it's been implemented has been less than clear, I think. You know, I've looked back through a lot of the minutes going back to 2009, which is the last year that, that minutes are available online. And I've looked at all of the, these types of applications where waiver of jurisdiction was requested. And more often than not, the board holds a public hearing, but the strict language of the code doesn't seem to require it. So I think we can be a little bit more efficient in our processing of waiver of jurisdiction applications by identifying them on the first meeting. If the applicant's requesting a waiver of jurisdiction, let's make that decision at the first meeting. Are you gonna waive your jurisdiction? And if so, it's resolution for the next meeting done.
Good. I think that's, I think that's fair because I think those tend to be very straightforward.
Yeah, and I think that there's also, there's other applications where you, you know, different categories of applications where you might want to request the town board to give you that authority to waive your jurisdiction. So if you get a site plan application that involves a, a swimming pool, doesn't involve, you know, major wetlands impacts, doesn't, you know, maybe there's two trees that are coming down. There's not a lot of impacts. Maybe it's something that as presented, you realize, you know, there's not a lot for us to do here. We may want to waive our jurisdiction. So you can ask the town board to, to give you that flexibility for other applications other than just resubdivisions.
I like it.
I do too. And the accessory apartments, does that require a code change?
Yes, that would require a code change.
But we can make a recommendation to the town board.
You absolutely can. And they wanna have a, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we should make that recommendation to the town board with regard to, you know, accessory apartments built within buildings. And it's only the outside buildings that we're concerned with.
Right. And my understanding is that the town board is interested in having a joint meeting with you early next year to talk about some of these ideas.
Excellent.
Yep. Good. And then the procedures, I I, you know, um, I don't know what we want to do with that, um. You know, I saw you attach a whole bunch of different drafts from various towns and villages, uh, I I I saw some of those and some of those made me actually turn red with embarrassment, I mean, the planning board members have to turn to the chairman and only address the chairman, it's like, are you kidding me? This is like, what, you're nuts? Uh, not not going to work here, so, um, um, yeah, speak when spoken to, it was like a, you know, uh, what you could, mother superior.
Bob's just raising it, he's just raising it.
So anyway, I obviously there's some elements in there that to the extent, and again, to to Sabrina's the response, I I think we probably have 60, 70% of the stuff already on the application forums, but if you want to set up a code on, you know, or or procedure, it's perfectly fine, I may, but um I don't know, does someone want to take that on, uh, to try to the you know, take the better points of what we've seen from these other towns and villages that uh that Jennifer's put before us? Ignore the, ignore those horrible ones, and then include the good ones. And again, I think Worf has got the, don't they have a preferred plan, a best practices uh procedure? Uh, on on planning boards like that?
They may, they may, that's a good idea.
But that would save a lot of uh retooling and relearning.
So is this, if if it's something that that the planning board's interested in, we could put together a draft for you to take a look at, but if there's if there's no interest.
Exercising the process of everybody voting to see if there are three members who support it.
We can do that.
I'm on board.
I am, that's fine. Well, there you have it.
Do we have a third?
Can I? Did you, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll put together a draft.
Yeah, if if Wolf has got something that we could just work on, that might be really the most expeditious way.
I don't, I don't know if they do, but we'll check.
We could check.
Okay. Terrific, I think we did it, we actually summarized something here. Tell them we're on our way.
Jennifer, thanks a lot, this is really a really a a good thing, thank you for all the work.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate it, it's clear a lot of work went into it, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you Sabrina and Tom and Dennis too.
Yeah.
Felicia, uh, for their input.
Great job, guys, really appreciate it, terrific. Um, okay. What about, what's my agenda? Um, oh, we have one in front here, the uh Mount Pleasant District Distribution Center is a discussion item number six, action on a consideration memo to town board. Uh, Tom, you want to talk about this, in your memo, that you you propose that we send off to the town board for their consideration?
Well, I think we probably, um, no, not really, I mean, I think that we've, we've, you know, talked about the the purpose of it and
Yep.
And uh, so I volunteered to go ahead and draft a letter, and it's been circulated, so I think that it's, it would be, uh, if anybody has comments to it or thinks that it's a bad idea, um, we should probably discuss that, and then if uh if it's just comments, perhaps Bob, you'd be uh willing to make any revisions and then just send it off.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions, comments, your thoughts or changes or suggestions on it?
I think Tom wrote a great memo, and and uh being former military, one of the goals is you, if you're going to send it to a higher authority, just make it happen on one page, congratulations.
Thank you.
Your father, yeah, your father would be proud of you, Tom.
Excellent, okay.
Yes, these are lessons hard learned, I have to tell you.
All right, good. Anyone else, anything?
I think it's good, I I I think it's a, it's obviously well written, which is not a surprise, but I think uh it it asks for something quite reasonable, that it, you know, if they're, oh, if they it's, you know, if they're, you know, we're asking the town board to inquire essentially, if they're opening up a additional study, then let them consider something that is relevant to us, I don't think it's unreasonable to of of the ask.
Okay. Okay, Kanani, you still here?
Yeah.
And you're signing off at 9:30? I've got you on overtime right now, sorry.
Yes, no, I I just need to head, but I I looked at it, I'm I'm okay with the idea that we are going to reach out.
All right, so why don't we, uh, do we need a motion then, I guess, an uh uh resolutions or approval?
Don't move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well. Okay, we're all, no one opposed, so it's all set, and the last thing we have are the minutes.
I just have a quick question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry, so Tom had said that you were sending this off, or am I sending this off?
You could send it off to us, uh, to the town board, uh, on on planning board stationary.
Yeah, so so he, so so it has to be sent, it has to be sent by Felicia on planning board stationary after the final version has been resolved by Bob.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay.
I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, so our next item in last item here are the minutes of a regular meeting on uh March 2nd. Anyone, any changes? I have one little minor one, I'll just send it off to you again, Felicia, Felicia, is that working when I send those to you, is that okay? Can you read my handwriting?
I can, I can, it works, thank you.
You're one of the few who can, so that's good.
I worked for attorneys for 21 years, so I can read anybody's handwriting.
Anyone else, if you have any changes, uh, you know, unless there are material changes that we need to to discuss, otherwise, if you have some sort of wordsmithing or, you know, grammatical change, et cetera, you can just send them into Felicia. And with that, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion then to adopt the minutes as amended um, for March 2nd? Let's not fade, we need, we need a motion in a second, we're finish line here.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, good. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? No, so the motion's carried. And I think we're there, um, anyway, um, everyone have a wonderful holiday, have a nice break. Bob, granted, thank you for joining us on your vacation day. I hope you guys, I hope you guys get overtime.
And this is my vacation week, hey.
This is our vacation week, Bob, and no, I get overtime.
I had vacation day from last, from yesterday, so I attended a zoning board meeting last night and a planning board meeting tonight, and I spent just as much time at time as I do when I'm supposed to be on vacation. Just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, and you have to use it or lose it, right?
That is correct.
Wow, okay. Anyway, let's not waste any more of your vacation time then, could be fun times tonight. Anyway, is there a motion to close the uh hearing, uh, the the meeting?
Motion.
Meeting, so.